Good night.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, and please, uh, please welcome, welcome to the October 8th meeting of the Ithaca Common Council. We will go ahead and call the order. I'll note that all the person Brown has informed me that she is in transit, and I expect we will see all the person Shapiro shortly. Um, tonight is a relatively short agenda. Uh, we will be, uh, having most of what council will be doing here this evening is talking about the budget, which will technically happen at a meeting immediately after this one in the exact same room. If you were here for the public hearing on the budget, uh, that'll be in about 20 minutes. You're also welcome to comment, public comment, uh, but that will be a meeting sequentially after this one. Um, first, I will go ahead and read the emergency evacuation notice since we have a full house. Uh, in case of an emergency, we are to take one of two exits, the door that most of you came through or the door back here over my left shoulder. We are to head west towards the corner of South Kyuga and Green Street. Please do not cross the street unless absolutely necessary. Uh, those with restricted mobility, in the event of emergencies, it is best to move to one of the stairwells where first responders will arrive to aid you. In the event of other emergencies, you will be notified, uh, how to proceed at that time. We want everyone to be aware of their surroundings and offer help when it is not to your own detriment as you are your own best advocate. Also, I'll let the record reflect, uh, Mr. Shapiro has joined us. Um, with that, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to, do we have any municipal officials? We will not today. All the person?
Yeah, the, the county has a budget meeting at this time. Uh, I have been instructed to, uh, tell you all the county is in its budget season two.
Great.
That's their update.
Thank you, all the person. Um, with that, can I just get a motion to review and approve the August 20th and September 3rd meeting minutes of the common council moved by all the person Matos, second by all the person Letterman, all those in favor of adopting those minutes, and that carries 10 to zero. At this time, we will hear statements from the public before we move to consent agenda. Um, I will read your name. We have below a critical mass, so you will have three minutes once you begin speaking. My first speaker is Teresa Alt. And Zach, you are here somewhere. I don't see you. You are on deck. Ah, there you are. Welcome, Teresa. As you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
I'm Teresa Alt of 206 Eddie Street. Like you, I have been reading the 2026 proposed budget and watching the city manager's Monday presentation. I have some thoughts about items in the budget, but they don't fit neatly into the narrowly defined categories for tonight's hearing. So apologies, I'm going to mention them now. I note that the cost of health insurance has gone up 18%. Fixing this is not a matter of tweaking the city budget. Rather, it is in going all out to push the state government, assembly, state senate, governor, to pass the New York Health Act. The New York Health Campaign, allied with many other organizations, is calling for a special session of the legislature to pass it now, and for the governor to sign it. This single payer statewide system would save money by cutting out bureaucracy, high pay to insurance executives, expensive treatments for patients who waited too long before consulting a doctor or a nurse. New York State is bigger than lots of countries that run their own systems. An increased contribution to TCAT would be money well spent that would help to lower city costs for maintaining parking spaces, as residents would realize that they can live without cars, and commuters would realize that they don't have to drive to work. Don't think that increasing the price for parking would help, because individuals will just avoid paid spaces and park on other streets where it's free, but the city has to maintain them, of course. Economizing on DPW is a false economy. A couple of winters ago, I watched while both police patrol cars were occupied on Upper East Seneca Street, where cars had gone out of control on a very slippery road and crashed into parked cars. That probably cost more in police time than it would have cost to better staff DPW.
Thank you very much. My next speaker is Zachary Winn, followed by Erica Bush. Welcome, Zach. As you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
Jermaine to the budget, correct?
No, this is public comment. You're welcome to also speak, uh, to the budget at the budget hearing, which will take place after the
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm happy to be able to report to you that there has been progress made in bringing a water supply to the sanctioned camping area behind Walmart. Uh, there's been concrete poured for a pad beneath the water spigot, and it appears that there will soon be a reliable water supply for the people living there. I appreciate the city following up on its commitment to provide basic amenities to the population living in the sanctioned camp- in camping area, uh, despite the issues that arose around the planned Code Blue shelter and navigation hub. Uh, there was a recent incident that occurred by the fish ladder in Railroad Bridge just outside of the sanctioned camping area. A man drowned and later died after his bicycle fell into the water, and he went into the inlet to retrieve it. I'm told by a promiscuous person familiar with the area that this person who drowned spent a great deal of time in the jungle. His death is the most recent of many that have occurred, uh, and, uh, that are connected to the area, uh, which have included numerous overdoses as well as a suicide by hanging. Uh, in its current state, conditions in the area are not particularly suitable to the, to human habitation, uh, until the inter- with, until the introduction of the water supply, which until the duck, until the introduction of the water supply features no infrastructure whatsoever, apart from the dirt and gravel roads that have been put into place by the DPW. Uh, there is a large amount of funds that have been dedicated for this project over the last few years since it was implemented. Uh, please consider utilizing these funds more judiciously to create a better environment for the people that have been encouraged to live there. Uh, a plan to deal with the homeless population, uh, and its growth is desperately needed. I was out one evening recently and saw people sleeping at both the Green Street and Seneca Street bus stations. So whatever you can do to, uh, finish the implementation of the, uh, um, outreach center, uh, would be very good, uh, to, um, bring some sort of, um, relief to this population of people. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Erica Bush, followed by Aaron Fernando. Welcome, Erica. You have three minutes once you begin speaking.
Hi. My name is Erica Bush, and I'm here to talk about, uh, the Flock camera contract. Please end this contract, and until you can do that through the proper legal channels, do everything you can to mitigate the future harm Flock can do to our community. I watched Chief Kelly and Sheriff Osborne speak last night at the county legislature meeting, and I heard a lot in their voices. I heard that they want to do good to protect people. I heard in their voices the pain of witnessing the impacts of violent crimes that have gone unsolved. And there are people who have seen so much pain in their careers. There are a lot of painful things in this world, but the pain of watching other people's pain, of being asked to help, and of feeling unsupported, ill-equipped, or simply unable to deliver on that help is a pain that one could call a trauma that leaves a mark on one's heart. Tonight, I want to urge them and you to let there be some room between that pain and the eyes that you use when you look at what Flock has been found to make possible in our country and in communities not really unlike ours. I want to invite you to play the tape forward and look at the moment in our future when we discover that a woman has died because an abusive partner was able to access her location using the Flock network data. The moment when students in our community protesting a genocide are found and detained for exercising their right to freedom of speech because a Flock network had months worth of information on where they went day to day. And the moment I ziptized children outside an apartment building in our community or one nearby because Flock data led them there. I want to invite everyone who has a hand in this decision, our police, our city, and county elected representatives, and our city manager, to think about how you will feel when those moments happen. To think about how you have felt in your bones in times in the past when you received heart-sinking news. And then I want you to imagine with that heaviness on your body, what it will feel like to have your next thought be, I could have prevented this. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Aaron Fernando, followed by Jim Smith. Welcome, Aaron. You have three minutes once you begin.
Hello, everyone again. Um, yes, I am also speaking on Flock. Um, so at Tompkins County Legislature yesterday, I spoke about a situation that happened a few weeks ago, just a couple of weeks ago, um, where Flock technicians had reinstalled Flock cameras against the will of the city of Evanston. Um, basically, the city had taken it down, and then the cameras mysteriously reappeared. According to the Chicago Tribune, tech company Flock Safety removed the cameras earlier in September after an audit found that some federal agencies, including US Customs and Border Patrol, were able to access the cameras data, which shows who was driving where. The city became aware that the tech company had reinstalled 15 to 18 cameras in former sites on September 18th. The city then sent a cease and desist letter, and it has since, um, placed tape over the cameras. Uh, yesterday, uh, this was brought to the attention of Tompkins County legislators, and, um, there was a Flock, like, sales rep present who was asked about this by a legislator, and, um, he said, and I quote, "Evanston asked to have their contract removed with cause. There was a legal disagreement about if there was cause or if there was not cause." A technician, when this conversation was going on, preemptively decided to start taking down the cameras, and when realized what that he had moved too quickly, attempted to correct the mistake and put it back up." That's what the Flock rep said. Now, that is deeply concerning. It might be a lie. Um, if it's not a lie, it's actually very concerning, because that would mean, um, that Flock as a company is not in control of its employees. And so if they're not in control of their employees, how are they going to keep our data safe is a good question that could be asked. Um, so either this company has ulterior motives in the placement of the cameras, because it appears to really want them up, even if cities don't want them. Uh, as it, as you can see, it fought it legally, and then it placed the cameras back up. Um, you can watch this in yesterday's meeting. It's like around the three-hour mark. Um, and so basically, um, yeah, I'm urging you all to be responsible and not fund Flock. Uh, this is dystopian surveillance, and they know it. Um, and, uh, like dozens of municipalities now, uh, I urge you to not fund Flock and get this out of the community as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is James Smith, followed by, is it, is it Dirk Tracy? Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin, as you know.
James Smith, paramedic. Uh, a week ago Monday, there was a horrific accident in Truittmansburg. It was dispatched car on fire, three people entrapped. Think how it is to respond to something like that. Meantime, in the county, other calls started dropping. Truittmansburg ambulance went there and asked for two units from bangs. Uh, other calls were coming in. The municipalities were trying to work together to meet the need, except for Ithaca. Dryden ambulance was dispatched into the city to respond to a fall which turned into a lifting assistance. Ithaca Fire used to respond to those. They could have responded, saw it was a lifting assistance, and canceled Dryden ambulance. It shows a lack of respect to the people of Dryden to call in an ambulance, and you have 10 EMTs here in the city available and not have them respond. You are asking other communities to deplete their resources when you have not utilized your own unconscionable. Last month, you were discussing just cause employment. Ms. Matos told the speaker who disagreed with her to check their morals. Um, six months ago, I sent an email to all the council people in Tompkins County Legislature voicing some of my concerns. One of them would be such the possibility of just cause raising unemployment by 10%. No response. How about we discuss some of the issues rather than just checking morals? Um, Ms. Matos stated how passionate she is about her community. I am too. It's one of my privileges. I've been able to serve your community for seven years. I would tell the people of color who have hypertension and are higher risk of strokes and heart attacks, on the issue of the decrease in EMS response from the city, Ms. Matos and the rest of city council have been missing in action. Now, council is talking about funding a roots team for maybe a million dollars that would respond to, among other things, excessive noise complaints. Yet, in Ithaca, a resident can call for 911 for stroke symptoms, and they may have to wait for Truittmansburg to arrive. I went on a stroke call today. Ithaca Fire, who was the closest, did not respond. We now have a response system that can have disparate higher negative impacts depending on your race, gender, economic status. Maybe we should talk about just cause EMS. And by the way, still no response from Mrs. Molenoff. How are we supposed to get a hold of our city manager, the Imperial City Magisterium now? Um, I've made my phone calls. I've sent my emails. Still no response. You who, Ms. Molenoff, uh, I'd appreciate it if you'd let us know how the residents of Ithaca are supposed to contact you and get a response.
You guys should be holding her accountable. Thank you very much. My next speaker is, again, I think it's Dirk Tracy. Did I say that right? Ah, welcome. And then Susan B., I'm so sorry, I cannot read your handwriting. You're next. Uh, welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Um, I am also here to talk about Flock. Uh, I'm going to share a story. This is, uh, uh, one of the many scandals that, that has played out in the news about Flock around the country. And, and I want to bring it up because there is, uh, within recent days, there's been a, uh, an update to it. So I'm just going to start from the beginning. Uh, on April 23rd of this year, a woman in Texas self-induced an abortion with medication. On the same day, she was violently assaulted by her partner, who choked her and held a gun to her head in front of their toddler, threatening to kill her and demanding that she beg for her life. After the woman fled, the man reported her to the police for having an abortion. A sheriff's affidavit from this time indicates that police consulted with their district attorney about charging the woman with the death of the fetus, because abortion is against the law in Texas. The same day, sheriff searched the entire country through 88,345 cameras. Uh, records show that the reason for the search was recorded as, quote, "had an abortion. Search for female." On May 14th, the woman shared her story with police of the violence she had endured, and the man was arrested and charged on May 22nd. On May 28th, a week after the man's arrest, 404 Media learned of, of the May 9th Flock search. And on May 29th, Flock stated that the search had been to locate a missing woman who may have been injured. This continues to be the line that Flock offers. It is on their website, uh, as their description of this incident. The sheriff's department stated to journalists that a family member had been afraid for the woman's life and afraid that she might be bleeding to death. The thing is, documents released just, or documents discovered by journalists just within the past few days clearly show that the quote-unquote "missing person" narrative doesn't emerge in anyone's paperwork until a week after the 404 media, uh, story. It, it was not present in that story earlier. Uh, furthermore, the abortion was two weeks prior, uh, to the search. So it's, it's a bad faith argument. Nobody thinks that she was still, uh, that she was going to bleed out two weeks later, and there was imminent danger of her life. They had to find her right now. Um, the only family member listed in the documents related to the case was the man who was abusing her, who used the law to sic the police upon her. So this is an act of violence and control by an abusive partner, and Flock has continued to represent this man's treatment of his wife, his siccing of the police on her, is a heroic expression of caring and concern. As many domestic violence advocates have repeatedly said, abortion bans provide new and powerful ways for abusers to dominate and harm their victims. Uh, I, I, there's a writer, uh, who, who I appreciate, uh, who's written that every trauma is really two traumas. There's an awful thing that happened.
I apologize. That is your time, but you may submit the rest of your comments in writing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My next speaker is Susan, I'm sorry, Butros. Thank you so much. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Butros, yeah, I want to address the Flock cameras. And my first statement is democracy cannot survive under 24/7 surveillance. The constant surveillance inhibits democratic participation. I urge the complete removal of the Flock cameras and significant limits to other methods of surveillance. These citizens, these decisions need to be made in consultation with our citizens. I appreciate the efforts of our local police department, and I, I want to emphasize that. And I am certain that they undertook the installation of this technology with the clear intent to improve our safety. I took the report from the police department here and looked at, um, the sorts of things that had, um, been used in relationship to Flock, and there were quite a few of stolen vehicles. Now, there are other ways to track stolen vehicles. I found an article, Privacy Nightmare on Wheel. Every car brand flunks the privacy test. So most of our modern vehicles today come with other ways to track them. The, the other issues that came to mind as I looked at the police report were the vast number of entities with which the data is shared, and that represents a very large threat to the control of that data. Whether you use the data for one second and eliminate it, or I, I think we have right now that we're keeping it for 30 days, and that's way too long. But I, I would like to see this whole thing stopped at this point so that we can investigate the impact that this will have on our security. And again, I'm going to end my comments with this statement in no uncertain terms. The doc, democracy cannot survive in a surveillance state. And I also, uh, recommend to you an article that was in Fortune magazine that quotes Larry Ellis, the owner of Oracle. That's his goal to have 24/7 surveillance, so we're, quote, "on our good behavior." Think of that. That is a chilling statement, and I urge you all to investigate further and, and help us control this threat to our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you or any other members of the public have, if you or any other members of the public have documentation you'd like to leave with deputy clerk, you absolutely may do so. Um, my next speaker is Adam Chandler, followed by a person who has listed their name as Heel. I don't have a last name. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I've lived in Ithaca for the past 25 years. I'm here to voice my opposition to the use of and funding of the Flock mass surveillance network in our community. There are many parts of Ithaca that I appreciate. For example, sidewalks. When my children were young, we used the city sidewalks to walk around safely and with dignity from one part of downtown to another. I want to thank all the people in the city government for their efforts recently to improve the sidewalk intersections. I was in Louisiana a few days, uh, this past August, and the starkest difference I noticed was not the temperature, but the lack of sidewalks. In contrast, the Flock cameras and sound monitors installed in our city and county and across the country make me and others feel unsafe. I know that the data collected, shared, retained is insecure, and there are many, many published examples of abuses of the data. You've heard a couple of already. If you're interested in educating yourselves, I'm happy to provide you with citations. There's no good excuse to be ignorant about the harms. I do not want my tax dollars used to subsidize a mass surveillance data broker. I would rather that whatever funds you might consider giving to the cynical corporation instead be used to provide our city employees with well-deserved raises. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My next speaker is Heel, followed by Leonardo Villa Forte. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening. Um, in, during the Salvadoran and Guatemalan Civil War on July 10th, 1985, Ithaca's Common Council declared Ithaca a sanctuary city for refugees. In February of 2017, Ithaca's Common Council unanimously adopted an ordinance formally declaring Ithaca Sanctuary City. Now, I would like you to consider how mass surveillance technology that records every single passing license plate, um, and to just everybody's license plate, how that creates maybe a culture of, of fear and surveillance. It's a mass surveillance tool. It's not a compatible with a sanctuary city. A sanctuary city is one that protects the safety of all the residents, ones that values every resident despite, and it's, and, and no matter what their immigration status is. And so I urge you, council, uh, to, to understand what your values are and, and to, and to meet them, and that these Flock cameras are not perhaps meeting the sanctuary city, uh, commitment that has been in place for decades, right? So, um, it, it, and it makes people less safe. I mean, people have talked about, uh, like, actual examples already of, of people being tracked for, for, uh, abortion, uh, reproductive, like, health. The data on the Flock, uh, site can be downloaded and stored for meant, for, like, long after the 30-day mark. They say it only is 30 days, which, by the way, is still 30 days of data. That is, people can track people's locations, um, and then it can be downloaded and stored indefinitely, right? So, so this data of every sing- it's not just license plates either. It creates a fingerprint of the car with bumper stickers and everything. It captures an image of the car, right? And so this is, this is a mass surveillance tool that also the people have not consented to. Consent must be freely given, reversible, informed, enthusiastic, and specific. And it is not, the people have not consented to this. And, and, and people are coming here telling you they don't consent to this. And, and, and yet, and yet, it's still in the budget. So, um, I, it, it, there's, there's, the, this company has not put in place the necessary safeguards, um, to, like, actually protect the people. And, and frankly, um, it made some quite alarming statements yesterday during the, uh, legislature meeting, uh, that, that said that they kind of don't have any of those, like, values that they're being met. They, they will cooperate with ICE in other parts of the country, they, if their state laws allow them to. And, and this database is not limited to the local municipalities, right? So if, if New York, sure, but like, anybody, there's, 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 this data is, there's just no, it just doesn't make any sense to, 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 to keep this data, like, available and, like, having these cameras at all. Like, it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you very much. My next speaker is Leonardo Villa Forte, followed by Lee Rogers. Good evening. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening. I'm a law student going into my sixth year, going on seven as a resident of Ithaca now. And you've heard a lot about Flock today, so I'm not here to debate the pros and cons. So the purpose of my comment is to bring to your attention the fact that there's good reason to believe that a lot of these concerns are well-founded, having analyzed the contract myself, and so it might be useful for me to put them into context regarding a couple of provisions in the contract that you signed with Flock. If you've taken the time to look at the provisions, there are two that I've flagged and that speak to the potential lack of control that Ithaca has over its data. The first is that Flock reserves the right to use anonymized data for their own purposes, regardless of location, for any future products they'd like to develop. We have no idea what kind of process they use to do this. Very likely, that data can be de-anonymized. Secondly, Flock has explicitly said that it will turn over the data if they feel they are legally required to do so. This strikes me as quite circular. They determine whether they are legally required to turn over the data. As you've heard about in the news, uh, any government agency knocking on Flock's door might compel them to turn over the data and say, you are legally required to do so. The point I'm trying to get across is that The point I'm trying to get across is that you all will have no control over that decision-making process. You've lost your voice. And so I just want to bring attention to the risk that is involved as you consider whether to renew this contract or not. In the abstract, I recognize the potential values of this system. Unfortunately, the data on the ground does not support any improved law enforcement effectiveness. On the other hand, the risks are clear. Data breaches of this kind aggregated in private companies are a daily risk. Even today, New York Times reports hacking big law firm companies. The risk that Flock breaches will happen or that the data will be used without our supervision is large, whether we'd like that or not. And so this council should be very careful about whether it wants to continue letting Flock store our data. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Lee Rogers. This is public comment. You're welcome to speak on truly anything. Hat tip Wade Beltramo. But also there will be a budget hearing following this. So, welcome. Good to see you again, twice in one day. You have three minutes once you begin.
I wanted to first give a shout out to you, our mayor, and to, yes, to our fifth ward council member. Because Robert and Margaret, who spoke at the NISA rate hearing today, knocked it out of the park. Very important. So thank you for taking that time. I want to congratulate, congratulate the city manager who came in under cap for the 2026 city budget. That's, that's a big difference from 2025. I remember speaking them then, which was the day after our national election, and I was traumatized. So this is, this is a big improvement and a sigh of relief. But tell me if I have this right. There are some programs that were not included in this budget that might, these items might be able to be added as the, as progress moves forward. And I think they're big-ticket items. So I'm urging the council to please keep your focus on the, on the budget that has been presented by the city manager. Everybody in this room knows that we are financially stressed here in Ithaca. Property taxes, rent, food, healthcare, and utilities taxes. They're unsustainable for working-class people like me and for middle-class people. So I urge the council to just stay focused and keep the budget below the cap. So I have to say, oh no, I'm gonna add something else while I'm up here. I would love if once or twice this coming year, we had, you'll forgive the expression, a town hall where we, the people, come and ask you a question, and you, our elected representatives, in the moment, answer those questions. It's gotta feel horrible for you to all sit here and for us to come up with these public comments and just dump all over you. And I'm very conscious of how that must feel for you. You do a great job. You work really hard. But if you would consider that platform, once or twice, maybe three times a year, that we could just come and ask you one question, just one, and then you would respond, that would be fabulous. Thank you so much for your service and your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Ben Basam. Then my last speaker, nope, I have a ton on, on Zoom. My last in-person speaker is, is Casey Verderosa. Welcome. As I'm sure you can guess, you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. My name is Casey Verderosa. I'm the Executive Director of Ithaca Welcomes Refugees, a local nonprofit which assists refugees and immigrants as they rebuild their lives in Tompkins County. I'm here to urge the city of Ithaca not to renew its contract with Flock Safety. Well, I have listened to the sheriff's office discuss the benefits of Flock's cameras, which have been installed, as you know, all over the county, and I have visited its transparency hub. I'm not sure if the city has something similar. And I want to acknowledge that those benefits are real. It seems to me that the safety risks posed by Flock's cameras outweigh their benefits. As you can imagine from my role, I'm concerned that the license plate data recorded by Flock could be used by immigration enforcement agents to track and locate refugees and immigrants residing in Tompkins County, especially as the Trump administration has sought to criminalize people fleeing dangerous situations who followed all the rules. And as the administration has detained people without care for the validity of their immigration status and by increasingly resorting to racial profiling. I think I understand that the contract the city has signed with Flock stipulates that only the city will have access to the data from Flock's cameras here in the city of Ithaca, but I have concerns on two points. First, I'm concerned that this administration's overreach and lawlessness may cause it to somehow force Flock or the city to share its data. In the case of Flock, even though they don't have access to the data, I imagine they would have some fail-safe way to get their clients' access to the data if for some reason they were to lose access, in effect similar to the forgot password feature for every internet-based account. Or Flock or the city could be subpoenaed to release data. My second concern relates to the large list of external organizations with access that are listed on the county's transparency hub. Again, I'm not sure if the city has something similar. They seem to be mostly New York State-based police departments and sheriff's offices. And I'm wondering, is it within, within the realm of possibility that if someone from one of those law enforcement departments heard of Ithaca Welcomes Refugees, searched for information publicly available about us and the people we support, and identified some people by name, that they could search for that person through data that the city of Ithaca shares and provide that data to immigration enforcement? I heard during a county public safety meeting that no officer can access data without a case number and a reason, but could ICE pressure someone in another municipality to create a case number and reason for their purposes? The usage of Flock cameras seems to fly in the face of our sanctuary city status. Last, I would like to point out that the American Civil Liberties Union has been warning the American people about Flock's mass surveillance tools for a number of years, based on mass surveillance's tendency to be used for purposes which extend beyond their original use. That is already happening, and Flock's offering to clients this year to monitor vehicle traffic safety patterns for suspicious behavior, a slippery slope which creates suspicion, not quite out of thin air, but from dubious origins. Again, I urge the city not to renew the contract.
But that is your time. You may submit the rest of your comments in writing. My first Zoom speaker is Ann Johnson. Hi, Ann. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry, just.
Just one moment before you begin speaking, because I think we have to turn your, the, we have to turn the volume up on our end a little bit so we can hear your comments clearly.
Okay.
Oh, that's, but that, that's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. I'm also here to speak about Flock. I live over here on West Hill, and I was very alarmed earlier this summer, along with many of my neighbors, to find cameras around our neighborhood. I, let's see. If I can share my screen with you.
Don't, I don't believe that functionality is permitted, but you may describe, and you may also, and I'll, we'll, we'll cede you 10 seconds back since I'm talking over your time. If you have documentation you'd like to share with council, we can provide an email for you to do so, and we can look at that separately.
Okay, no problem. I, I do want to mention then that we have a Google map that I began working with the Cornell Civil Liberties Clinic once I discovered these cameras, because I was very concerned about privacy issues and the issues of mass surveillance that everyone's been bringing up. And we have created a Google map that has mapped all the Flock cameras in the area. We have 50 of them mapped. So I will send the link to you guys so you can, you can look at it when you can, if you would like. We have cameras all around us on West Hill, and my kids go to school in Cuba Heights. My son plays soccer in Lansing, so I'm driving back and forth across this city a couple of times every day, and I know my car gets photographed probably five or six times a day. I was at the county legislature meeting last night, and they discussed this quite a bit. One thing I think that is important, the sheriff said, was that they had revoked camera data access from all the counties that have active 287G agreements with ICE. So that might be something that you guys check on with IPD, that we should revoke that access for, for counties with, with the 287G agreements. A big, lot of discussion in the county was over the Give grant. Is it tied to funding the Flock cameras? Can we sort that out? Can we separate, can we still get the, the Give grant money? Because it's important, it's a very important resource. And use the money for something else and separate it from Flock? That's a question I have. And I'd also like to ask you guys to demand some hard data and statistics from IPD about how these cameras are reducing gun violence. If they're part of the Give grant, I think we need to see some really hard data about how they are actually working to reduce gun violence. Because I don't think the data is going to be that impressive. I really don't. So thanks. That's all I have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. My next speaker on Zoom is Reggie Teasley. Hi, Reggie. Can you hear us? You're on mute, perhaps.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes once you begin.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I've lived in Ithaca for 40 years, and I've lived on West Hill for 25. I also learned about these cameras when I saw them going up in the neighborhood. I've studied surveillance for a long time. My background is in sociology, and I know it was, they were originally used for gangs. This is supposed to be about gun crime. My understanding is we don't really have a lot of gun crime. This is probably a solution, looking for a problem. We really don't have gun crime problems up here, not like they have in the South or in the West. But Flock is a product that is, exists to make a profit. Unfortunately, the council and also the legislature naively accepted this with money supplied by the state, I presume, to protect us. But that critical thinking that we were always talking about would have been very welcome. Think ahead. What are the uses and misuses of this product? Now, they could not have foreseen what has happened to our national environment, which has become extremely problematic under the current administration, which has chosen recently to target even the military against the populace, including citizens. Now, in that context, mass surveillance is a terrible idea. It simply offers up whoever is deemed as enemies on a platter to ICE or whomever is seeking them. Because people are surveilled, they, their activities through the day are identified. And they could easily be picked up at night or disappeared, as some other people have been. This is a strategy of autocratic governments. It's not anything that we need in a democracy. Frankly, I like Ithaca because we all get along pretty well. We're pretty tolerant of one another. We even speak on the street. We don't need this surveillance. Flock needs to sell their product. We don't need to have it. Please, begin now to stop this contract and get Flock out of our city so that once again, we could be safe in each other's presence in a community that's not chilled by mass surveillance. Parting word, Hannah Arendt talked about the banality of evil. Geez, what can a few cameras do that's harmful? Well, watch. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. I know we also have some folks who have signed up for the public hearing, which will follow the council meeting this evening. We will turn privilege of the floor. Allow me to quickly just say, since the vast majority of our comments were about Flock, that I wanted to thank publicly the individuals who shared the ACLU model legislation, which has been transmitted to the attorney's office for review. I also know that following our budget deliberations, the administration is going to be preparing an update on Flock overall for council to discuss. And so I would invite you all to come back for that presentation for council deliberations at that time. At this time, I will open up the floor to the rest of the council colleagues before we move to consent agenda. Alder Person Keel, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the public for coming out tonight. I am firmly against the Flock cameras in our community. I think I had been against them, and I think that there, of course, are always pros to these situations. But the more I think about the implementation of them and the more I realize some of the things, and I just, I was really interested in the, the report that you provided, and thank you for providing that, and I looked it up on my own. And, you know, there's of course always a, always a chance that I'm misinterpreting the data. That happens quite often. But, you know, we've had four searches that had, that were above, that accessed over 90,000 cameras across the country. And, and, you know, I think it's impossible to know. We are only sharing data allegedly with people in New York State. But I also think that's kind of concerning to me, right? That doesn't necessarily mean that all the crimes that we're helping solve are Ithaca crimes, right? And I think that there is something more to consider there as we move forward. So I would be in support of a full audit of our, of our Flock camera system. I think that there are concerns about our contract length and whether or not we have kind of missed the boat of being able to get out of that, and I think we should explore that more. But I, I would be in support of a full audit of, of the Flock data and how we use that going forward. So thank you again for coming out tonight.
Alder Person Brown.
As always, thank you for coming out. Sorry I was late. But back when I first, when they first brought this Flock to the council, I was skeptical because I knew which neighborhoods, which neighborhoods would be most targeted, and it would hurt the most. But I wanted to, and it made me think about a book I read when I was in, I can't remember now, either the end of junior high school or the beginning of high school, by George Orwell, 1984. And I wanted to read a quote from it. War is peace. Freedom is slavery. Ignorance is strength. The chilling phrase, "Big brother is watching you." An idea that who controls the past controls the future, and who controls the present controls the past. And that is, that all is very scary to me, with not only what's happening in, in the city of Ithaca, but what's happening in our country. Thank you.
Next, Alder Person Kumor.
Yeah, thank you, everybody who came out and spoke tonight. I have already made my position on Flock clear, but just to reiterate, especially in light of all of the new information that keeps coming out continuously, as well as brought to light today. The story about the young woman who, you know, she was in an abusive relationship, and Flock was used as a, as a tool of control and further abuse was truly sickening. And I really, you know, to agree with Alder Person Keel, think that we should be looking for other avenues, other than just non-renewal, to get out of the contract or turn off the cameras in some other way. And I would look towards the city attorney to maybe hear about different legislative pathways we can go about that for. But either way, it seems more and more apparent that there really is not a huge added law enforcement benefit in the first place. And, you know, that doesn't even take into account the horrific consequences that have unfolded due to its implementation in other areas. And, you know, for what it's worth, I actually had my car stolen a couple, you know, too long ago. And the, you know, I really appreciate all the help that I received from the IPD, you know, once it was found, making sure it was safe, and, you know, being there and taking the report in the moment. But ultimately, I did find it through an app that let me like search for my car through Subaru. So again, you know, just, you know, that's just a personal anecdote, but I think it adds a little bit to what one of our speakers here said tonight about the level of surveillance in every other part of our life, and how maybe we don't need to add on to it in such a, you know, way that can be so vulnerable to exploitation when we're under such a horrific, you know, national, you know, environment right now. So thank you so much to everybody who came, and I do hope that there are ways for us to move forward, rather than just like waiting another year to non-renew.
Next speaker on my list is Alderperson St. Perez.
Just continuing on the, on the response to the Flock issue, I just want to note that we did vote to expand our sanctuary city protections when possible. That that is a decision we made at the beginning of this year. If what has been said about Flock is true, and I look forward to, I, I hope information will be sent to us by those who have it, and that it'll be presented to us. I look forward to that. If that's true, then, you know, limiting access to that data, controlling it, and most likely ending that contract is, I believe, something we've already committed to as part of our commitment to expanding our sanctuary city protections whenever possible.
Then I have Alderperson Letterman.
Sure. Excuse me, again, thank you everyone for coming out to speak. I shared the sort of same perspective, many of my colleagues, about Flock. And so there's no need to reiterate that. And I, you know, share the sort of seriousness of, of the situation there, especially what ICE is doing across the country. One thing I want to speak to briefly, I know happened in July, some folks in the community are talking about, and just want to bring up, is that a young man was killed on a job site, and it was a protest recently. He worked for DeMarco Construction, it wasn't properly safety trained, he was killed in a very avoidable accident. I think we all share this, but I think it bears repeating, that nobody should ever be killed at work, especially with sort of easily avoidable deaths. It's really, and I'm, I'm glad there's been a lot of attention. I just wanted to make sure that folks know that we're talking about that and figuring out what we can do there, if anything, if there's a way of sort of intervening. But yes, just to acknowledge that and appreciate everyone in the community who's been talking about that and trying to figure out ways in which we can, especially in the absence of sort of more enforcement from OSHA at the federal level, and the defunding a lot of what NIOSH does, do more in this city. But just want to say that, and thank you and everyone else for coming.
And my last speaker, unless I see any hands right now, is Alderperson Shapiro.
Thank you. I'd say my position on Flock is rather fluid. When I speak to the chief, and I have a few times, it gives me a lot of assurances about the protection we have over the system and the data. And then I hear from a lot of the folks that come to these meetings, and it kind of has me wavering and thinking about what the right choice is. I think it's also interesting, just reflecting on some of the comments. I know there was one comment that doesn't believe there's gun violence in our community, and I think it's pretty easy to find stories of gun violence in our community. And for a lot of the folks that were at yesterday's legislative meeting, it's surprising to me that nobody mentioned Travis Brooks' comments. He's been living in this community for a really long time. He's been supporting youth that often are growing up in violent areas, that have engaged, that have seen gun violence in their lives. And a lot of what he spoke about was how useful these cameras have been in helping to solve violent crimes, helping to prevent violent crimes. And, and I would just say all that to say it's, it's a very nuanced kind of decision, I suppose, for me. I can hear folks talking about the need to protect our city. We've established ourselves as a sanctuary city, and we talked to a lot about, heard a lot of folks about immigrants, or wanting to progress, excuse me, protect immigrant safety. But I think we also have to think about a lot of our residents, a lot of, certainly black residents that have grown up in neighborhoods where there is violence. And, and we've heard from a tremendous leader in Travis Brooks stating that these, these cameras have been helpful. So I'd encourage those who went to the meeting last night to listen back, if you, if you only skipped ahead, to listen back to his comments, because I thought they were helpful for me to listen to. I also just want to mention in response to Jim's comments, I've heard from the other municipalities that they're often picking up the slack and taking calls in, in the city of Ithaca. And I want to make sure as I say that, that is not a reflection on any of the people that work for the city of Ithaca, but it is a reflection, I think, on some part of our system being broken. And when people from Dryden or people from Truman'sburg or whatever the other municipalities have to come into the city of Ithaca to respond to 911 calls, and we have a, I think, a larger staffed fire department and, and police department than these other municipalities, it does call into question for me, why are these other municipalities serving us? And why aren't we able to serve ourselves and extend further out and help these other communities? So I thank you again, Jim, for keep bringing that up. And I'll, I'll keep, well, I'll keep listening and hoping that I can figure out a way to, to help with this, with this ongoing issue that you bring to us. Thank you.
Thank you. No members who have not spoken, right? All right, with that, we will go ahead and turn to consent agenda. May I please have a motion moved by Alderperson St. Perez? Seconded by Alderperson Kumar. All those in favor of the consent agenda being adopted? That carries unanimously. The only other item on the agenda this evening is I am moving to appoint former city employee and sidewalk program manager Peggy Tully to the planning board. Any, as, as is, as is now practice, those materials are available on legislate. I'm sure you've all reviewed them. Any comments or questions on this before we go to a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Peggy's appointment to the planning board? It doesn't need to be, it's a point, a point, thank you. No, no, thank you. That carries unanimously. With this, we are about to adjourn this meeting. We will give maybe like three or four minutes for folks to get set up and allow the folks who don't want to stay for the budget hearing to leave the room. But those of you who are here for the budget, don't go anywhere, because that is about to happen momentarily. So with that, at all official business being exhausted, I will adjourn this meeting. I don't have to call the meeting to order, because technically the meeting is just picking back up from yesterday. But everybody's here. First things first, we are going to have a public hearing on the budget. So I need a motion to open the public hearing from Alderperson St. Perez, seconded by Alderperson Kumar, all those in favor of opening the public hearing. That carries unanimously. Is there anybody who thinks, yes? Can I have your pen? That's okay. That's why I do it this way. Thank you, Jordan. Is there anybody who thinks that they're here for a budget hearing, who plans to speak, who has not filled this out? You are Susan Butros, correct? You are on here, don't worry. All right, with that, I'm going to go to the list. First speaker is Zachary Nguyen. And Susan, you're next. Just like public comment, you have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening. I would like to encourage you to retain funding for the Flock safety program within the budget, which I've been told totals approximately $69,000. The reasons the system is beneficial to the community are numerous, and I could not do a better job at explaining them than legislator Travis Brooks did last night at the Tompkins County Legislature meeting, when the Gun Involved Violence Elimination Grant was renewed. I will forward his comments to you. To summarize part of his comments, because of Flock and Give, individuals are now hesitant to drive around with guns in their vehicles. And those who support Give and Flock would never come to one of these meetings to say it, because they are afraid to do so. While I appreciate the city manager's proposed budget coming in under the tax cap, I also encourage you to do whatever is within your ability to reduce the tax levy this budget cycle, as you are well aware of the burden it places on homeowners, renters, and business owners. I would also like to suggest the apportionment of a small sum, even as low as $5,000, to help people who have come to Ithaca and are currently homeless return to places where they have ties and perhaps even family, in a voluntary relocation program similar to those found in Hawaii and San Francisco, to help people who wish to leave Ithaca and escape its high costs and drug culture. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Susan Butros. Welcome.
Thank you. My, my thoughts on the budget, if there was 69,000, if that could be reallocated, and that's a question that you don't have to answer right now. But I view this as kind of a Trojan horse. And the Greeks built the Trojan horse, and it was taken into the city of Troy, and then all the soldiers inside the horse came out and conquered the city of Troy. And it's a false premise to think that this is going to help us, in my opinion. So I would encourage us to find ways, can you use that money in other ways? And find other programs that can be used to reduce crime and gun violence. We, we didn't always have Flock cameras, but we've had gun violence and, and other social problems in the past. So there have been programs in the past that were developed and used. So I encourage you strongly to look at other alternatives. Number one, can you, can the money be used for other purposes? Repurposed to support other community efforts to reduce crime and gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My next speaker is Reed, very small handwriting. Could you say it again for me so I can get it right?
Hugh Rich.
Hugh Rich?
Yes.
Apologies. Reed Hugh Rich, welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Reed Hugh Rich. I live at 213 Cascatella Park Road. I just wanted to point out, I dropped off my Ithaca School District tax check on Friday, and so was able to total up my tax bill, property tax bill for this year. And it came in at $19,288.01. We've been Ithaca residents for about 10 years now, and my wife and I have just started looking for property elsewhere to move, because this is an unsustainable burden on the family. And it's unfortunate, because we love Ithaca, and the reason we found the house, which is a dream house, is because we can walk downtown, we can walk to the festivals, we can walk to work at Cornell. And I, I'll say my tax bill from the city alone, and obviously those are the three entities between the, the city, the county, and the school system. But the bulk of the increase has come from the city's tax burden, which has gone up 40% in the last three years. So I appreciate you coming in under the cap, but I would encourage you to do whatever you can to continue to find reductions. Because again, we, we really truly do love it here, but we've realized that we can't continue to live here if this continues to go up. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adam Chandler. All right. Speaker following that is Danny Zecleaver. Danny? Going twice? All right. John Graves, I know you're here. Come on up. Don't want to get copyright struck on The Price is Right, otherwise I would, I'd play it for you. Welcome. As you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, for doing your work. Over the past three years, the city property tax levy has increased by 22.6%. And property assessments have increased by 14.8%. Together, that means for some homeowners and renters, their housing tax bill have increased by nearly 41%, despite an inflation rate of only 9%. This is not affordable or sustainable for many city residents, including myself. With that said, the city manager is proposing a 2026 city budget that has a 3.5% increase and stays 0.7% under the tax cap. If that happens, it'll be the first time in four years that council has voted to stay within the property tax cap. As a reminder, the New York State Tax Cap Law was passed to provide homeowners and renters with some amount of stability and predictability for their long-term housing security. In my opinion, the tax cap is a helpful tool for promoting affordability and encouraging fiscal discipline at City Hall. I'm happy the city manager is using the cap as a stimulus to find new ways to deliver core services and keep growth more in line with what taxpayers can afford to pay. If council adopts the city manager budget, it'll send a clear signal that City Hall is working to protect residents from being priced out of their homes by property taxes. I support a 3.5% budget increase with zero over-target requests and encourage council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Benjamin Bassem. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
I was taking a look over at the expense reductions of the proposed budget, and I saw on it TCAT Remove Escalator Included. I saw it was noted as put in as OTR for CC. I would assume that means common counsel to consider. I just wanted clarity on this. Maybe I was overlooking something. I don't know. It means that there are other ramp-like systems already in place? Something like the escalator is redundant, or if you're actually taking away actual utility for people who are not able-bodied to get on the bus? So I was just, I wanted to understand that one. And then I saw that there's going to be an hourly Stewart Park parking for non-residents. I just think that's a little tough. I think parks should be free to access. It reminds me of like a carnival ride, and I don't think parks should be like carnival rides.
Thank you very much. I'll just publicly note, my next speaker, Lee Rogers, has left. My next speaker following her, Casey Verdosa, I believe also has left. So in that case, my next speaker is Gabriel, Gabriel Byrne? The actor? No? Nobody? Nobody? Okay. Gabriel or Gabrielle, are you here? No, okay. Nan Rohr, I know is here. And then Jordan, Jordan, you're on deck. Hi, Nan. As you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I'm Nan Rohr, CEO of the Downtown Ithaca Alliance, which serves the business, as the business, good lord, the Business Improvement District of Ithaca and is the champion for all things that contribute to downtown's economic vitality and health. I'm here on behalf of our 160-plus property owners, hundreds of businesses, thousands of residents, and tens of thousands of students and visitors who are invested in downtown and essential to its future. As the business, cultural, and community core of the city and the region, you know downtown is a major economic driver. And as such, it is the responsibility for all of us to ensure the conditions that invite further investment, growth, and vibrancy. We have been before you before, as you know, to gain your support for our efforts to ensure that downtown Ithaca is clean, green, and welcoming for all. For downtown, and in particular the commons, there is a need to address the ongoing quality of life concerns which require a consistent and dedicated presence from the IPD. These issues also require the attention and support of our social service providers through the care team and the Community Outreach Worker Program currently being conducted by Reach Medical. As you're also aware, Chief Kelly and the officers of the department have provided increased attention to the commons and downtown as of this past summer, providing for the regular patrol of officers charged with enforcing existing ordinances intended to safeguard a safe, clean, and welcoming environment for all. We're extremely grateful to the chief and his officers for their partnership and willingness to prioritize the commons. It's made a noticeable difference. I feel it necessary, however, to urge consistency in this effort to prevent the disruptive behaviors such as smoking and open container, as well as bikes riding through at top speed, because these undermine the investments of our business owners and the primary purpose for establishing the commons 50 years ago, which was for it to be a place of respite and welcoming open space, an area of bustling commerce, and a community gathering center. Without our shared diligence, these behaviors inevitably reoccur and erode our community's confidence in the commons and downtown more broadly as a place they wish to visit or do business. We require dedicated and consistent presence of the law enforcement and social services so that everyone is made to feel truly welcome throughout downtown. The comprehensive approach of providing not only law enforcement, but also our care team members and our outreach teams really does require that the IPD have sufficient funding and staffing to fulfill their obligations to the community. So I am here in support of IPD being able to do that. Additionally, I'm here in support of the Planning and Economic Development Department because the work that they do greatly impacts the ability of downtown to thrive as a center of commerce, residential life, culture, and tourism. Simply put, we also need them to be fully staffed in order to accomplish the recommendations of the city's recently completed downtown plan and also the retail strategy that was commissioned with the DIA and the city. So I strongly urge your approval of both of these requests. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. My last in-person speaker is Jordan Clemens. Welcome, Jordan. As you know, you have three minutes once you begin.
All too well. Hi, council members. How y'all doing? My name is Jordan Clemens. I'm the founder of a grassroots revitalization nonprofit called Unbroken Promise Initiative. My family lineage goes back to 1820s here, escaping from slavery from Maryland. And then my forefathers become a patriarch in this area in the 1820s. So with that being said, there's been a long lineage of things that my family has been able to identify as, you know, policies throughout the year from that time and how these things have affected underserved and marginalized communities. And, you know, unbeknownst to me, and as a young kid, I was charged with the opportunity to bear the responsibility to figure out a way that we found our way in. I'm 38, so that was around the early 90s when I was told this. So, you know, what does that mean? That means from that point on till now, you know, there has been a an intense focus on the environment and the culture and the society in which my people have resided in. And I've seen cultural shifts. I've seen political, social, and economic oppression, you know, in a ways where a lot of the people who don't look like me or share the same class that my people share were not able to see. So I'm able to provide a different perspective when I come to tables. And so that perspective was on, at the biggest platform in 2020, which some of y'all know that I led, was asked to lead the community out of the civil discourse during that time and became an advocate for, you know, economic and social and political prosperity for all people to help lift us up. And so what I want to speak to is regarding the flock and the give that's in there. That is troubling. It's problematic. I know I share some of the same sentiments that a lot of people, including Travis, but there, I believe that there are some insights that we're not, that have not made it to the floor yet, and that's common, you know, in my last five years of working alongside government and agencies. You know, we're kind of behind up here versus what's actually happening on the ground, on the front lines. And so it's very important that we take our time when, you know, leaning into things like this that impede on, you know, on liberties now. Obviously, with, you know, the grace of intent, obviously, we all want crime and we want to reduce gun violence. But we need to, you know, take into account like what is the truth and reality as to the cases being brought forth for people who are trying to push this across the line. And I think that as far as the budget goes, you know, stabilization is important. Shout out to you all. That's very hard. Deb, your team, and, you know, the council. But I yield the rest of my time. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then the last speaker is on Zoom, if they are still there, Neil Schwartzbach. Hi, Neil. Can you hear us?
You are on mute. How's that?
Well, we can see you, and we can see that you're speaking, and you're not on mute, but we can't hear you. Can you try one more time?
Oh, yeah. Let's see.
Let's try that one more time.
Yeah, my audio is on, so.
There we go. We can hear you.
Oh, you've got it. Okay.
Yep. All right. So welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you very much. As quickly as I can, I want to urge, let me shut the stove fan since I'm cooking. Want to urge council to really hold the line on the budget. Notably, there are two very important programs that may need funding. That is funding for TCAT and funding for the unarmed responders program. And if those, I think council has to make choices right now and figure out a budget where if A happens, then B has to disappear from the budget. That is, if the unarmed responder program or if TCAT needs funding, then we need to know in advance, okay, what is it that will have to come out of the budget? So that we just don't pass a budget where everyone is very pleased that it hasn't gone up too much, and then somewhere along the line during the year, significant programs get added to it. That can be accounted for in this budget process. It can be, here's the budget, and if this important need comes up, we're going to have to make this adjustment in the budget to keep it at the same level. And that would be a tremendous departure from last year and a tremendous improvement over last year. Where, if you'll recall, after the public outcry about the budget, the mayor instructed council members to submit possible cuts to the budget, I think, within maybe a week. And that was a formula for disaster, if you'll recall, and led to tremendous hostility and between city staff and common council. So I think now is the time to make decisions about if this needs funding in the future, and these programs are important, and they will need, then they may need funding, then something else will have to go from the budget. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public hearing. We have a motion to close. I didn't receive... Oh, Ben was here in person. Yeah, yeah. No, it's okay. You did the other thing wrong. Yeah, that's Ben. They already spoke. Yep. Motion to close public hearing. Move all persons in San Perez, seconded by all persons Kumar, all those in favor of closing the public hearing. That carries unanimously. With that, we are going to get into the budget discussions for this evening. As council is aware, but just as a reminder to the public, that will be the Planning Department, the Ithaca City Attorney's Office, and the Police Department. I know we have some preliminary comments from the city manager before we get into that. And just since it was mentioned, as just a reminder, we will discuss any proposed amendments on October, December, good lord, October 21st and 22nd. And council members, you are instructed to have your amendments in by what day? That's right. All right. With that, city manager.
So I think Dominic's going to get, put a slide up. And while he works on that, I just want to explain, there was one of the comments during the public hearing that asked a question about the escalator. I know that is potentially confusing. I just want to explain what that means. And thank you for reading the detail level of the budget, because that was like this little tiny line in there. So I appreciate your diligence to being an engaged citizen. That's amazing. So I think what, the reason that's confusing is what we did is we knew we were going to clearly have to hold up our obligation to TCAT. And so when we were putting the budget together for 2026, we did not assume that it was going to be flat. So we just sort of put, what did we do, three, some, like a 3% escalator on that and put that in when we had our original draft budget in. So then when we learned that TCAT was asking for a bit more, and we were trying to figure out how to come in under the cap, what we did is we just left the flat amount from last year in the budget that we built for 2026 and put the overage that they asked for, the $500,000, on the OTR list. So really, the only differential was that we took out what we assumed was sort of that reasonable escalator and then turned the bigger ask of the $500,000 into an OTR. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Just want to make sure that was explained. All right. So before we get into the departments, I want to sort of, again, thank council for also being really diligent and just kind of remind everybody that we're working with a lot of new tools and you're being presented information in different ways. So it's sort of a good reminder to staff that I think we need to kind of take a step back and make sure we're looking at the data from a number of different lenses. So some of the questions that you've been asking over the past, you know, 24 hours we've been diving into the budget are really helpful. So I just want to walk through, we have planning up first tonight. And so I want to kind of walk through what some of the different things are that you're looking through and hopefully explain a little bit more how this information is put in front of you and just a reminder of the difference between sort of budgeting and accounting, right? So just really sort of reminder at the top, budgets are projections. We joke about saying crystal ball, but they really are very educated and data-informed sort of projections for what we think we are going to have to spend and where we want to allocate resources. So that's the budgets. And then accounting is the actuals, right? So those are recorded after the fact. That's what tracks what really happened. So we kind of have parallel things happening at the same time. They're both really essential, but they serve sort of very different purposes. So just to kind of keep that really high level. And while some people are real experts at this, we just like to put all of that information out there and remind especially the people that are listening from home. So when you're looking at this variance line and you're doing a good job of sort of pointing out what might, may or may not look like an anomaly or something to be concerned about, I just want to show you sort of the behind the scenes of where those numbers come from. So first reminder for you is to remember that if you're looking at that revised adopted budget column, that's the fiscal year 2025. That's what was approved as a projection for what we think 2025 is going to cost. Now, 2025 isn't over, right? So there's that issue, right? So, and then the proposed budget line is what we think it's going to cost in 2026. So when we look at that variance, that's really only comparing what we projected for 2025 versus what we're projecting for 2026. So just sort of put that over here for a minute. And then I want to explain why some of those numbers in the variance column end up looking like they do. So because we're not, A, we're not done with 2025 yet, so we don't know where that actual actual is going to end for 2025. Just to sort of see why that number on the column for the variance is. So I did a little bit of helpful math on the bottom. So the number... So the number that we had there, that 21, 2,001,61,537 is what we thought we were going to spend. Also remember, we were in the middle of contract negotiations at the time of the budget and the budget approval last year. So we had, um, anticipated an increase in this personnel line, but that was accounted for in our contingency budget, not in the department line, because we knew that there was going to be an approval of a new contract. So, and then there was also the management confidential package that you accrued, approved a little bit, you know, into 2025. So then there was some sort of additional staffing and roster changes. So that 345 over there is a little bit skewed. This particular department had a significant number of staffing that were in that admin contract. And so then between the marker rate increase, increase that was approved, that we had that money accounted for in contingency, that's what maybe causes that variance to be a little bit inflated. So now when we're looking at what we think we're going to spend for 2026, all of those dollars are now in there. So as we move forward with building these new tools, it will become easier because we'll be accounting, we'll be accounting for things kind of the same way moving forward. And then the other thing to note is the retiree fringe used to be calculated per department. And now we have retiree fringe in one budget line. So that's sort of why that number looks skewed a little bit lower. So what, just a reminder to everyone, um, please continue to ask these good questions, but I wouldn't, um, be alarmed by variances that look like that. But absolutely, if you are alarmed by one of them, please ask us because there is probably, um, something like this that is easy to explain. And then just, you know, to show you exactly the same number of employees in 2025 and 2026 in this department. It's 32 and 32. So that is where we are. And with that, I think we have members of the planning department here. And Shaniqua, I think I also saw Rob in the, the Zoom waiting room. Yeah. So do the, so we'll put the planning side up. So then in terms of talking about planning. Great. Thank you. So, um, you will just sort of remember that what we're looking at for each of the departments are this, these kind of high level pieces. We're just sort of highlighting some of the big changes, some of the strategic decisions we're making for each department. Um, there aren't any, uh, OTRs for this department to go over. Um, this department did, um, defund a position as well to help us meet that coming in under the tax cap goal. They also took a pretty, um, deep dive into their contracts line and, uh, made some reductions there. And I think we'll try to do similarly to what we did with the, with the departments last night and just have you maybe try to stick to asking some of those, uh, high level questions this evening. I will let you know that our, uh, list of questions has ballooned to seven pages. So we are doing our absolute best to get all of that information to you. What I want to tell you is I'm sort of prioritizing, taking a deeper dive into the vacancy information. A lot of you have asked a number of different pieces about that. So I'm going to put, I think, a, a sort of, uh, deeper, more, I'm going to take a, a different look at that and compare a number of things and, um, sit down, I think with HR and controller and some people by the end of this week. So also by Friday, what I hope to have for you is just a little bit, um, more of a breakdown and of an understanding of some of the information that you received in the vacancy report. And just a reminder, it was our first kind of attempt at pulling a bunch of information together and putting it in one place. And, um, I'm going to do a more extensive review of that and kind of report back and kind of walk you through what some of the pieces in that report are. So, um, that's just, I think I've killed enough time to, uh, turn it back over to the mayor to, um, monitor, manage any questions that we have for our planning team.
Great. Thank you very much to the city manager. Uh, thank you to the planning department leadership for being here this evening. Um, as was stated, there are no OTRs. So we're not going to ask for any description of them. Uh, and as council will remember, uh, you are each permitted five minutes per department. So I'm happy to begin, uh, establishing a queue for this. First on my list is all the persons, Letterman and Matos. All the person, Letterman, you're recognized for no more than five minutes.
Sure. Um, I certainly won't take up all of it. Um, first, let me thank you for the cuts, the contract line. I appreciate the economizing. I'm sure that wasn't easy. Um, just one question, since I know the planner was working on some of the comp plan stuff had left, is there enough funding in the budget to make sure that's going to go forward for next year? Um, or just the comp plan work is going to be able to continue?
So, um, the, meaning the, the review and the update of the comp plan. So the planner that was working on that, um, actually, yeah, the, the person left and we, but that was a higher level position. So the positions remaining would be, um, uh, lower level positions. So I don't think the, the hiring will be able to do, would be, the person would be able to take on that task. We need to scale them up and, um, we have, you know, I think it would be difficult to take on that task.
Okay. That makes sense. But, um, is that, that position that was left vacant, is that being still funded in the budget for this coming year?
So we had some, some staff shifting around. So the position that was left vacant by the person who was working on the, um, update or it was not going to be a full update, but a sort of a, a light update. We moved another lower lever planner into that position. It was a senior level position. So now we have a lower level position to fill.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All the person, all the person Matos.
Um, just for clarification, the 25,000 allocated for rentals would be for vehicles for your department, correct?
So. So that is.
Yes.
Car rentals. Yeah. Wait, that's not, uh, yeah.
Is that all the person?
Yeah.
All the person Brown.
Uh, this may, uh, because of what our, uh, country is going through and stuff like that. You know, I've been sitting here for four years, almost four years now. And, um, I've, you've come up in front of us for four years. And, um, I'm thinking about your vacancies and this may seem out a little off landish to people, but I'm a little concerned that not once have I seen a person of color in your planning department in the leadership role. And that's concerning for me at this day and time. And what could happen so that we could see some people of color in your department?
Thank you.
I will recognize myself next, uh, which is just to follow up on all the person Letterman's question. If there were any, uh, identified possible deficiencies in your ability to, uh, actualize the amount of comp plan revisions that you'd like to do, uh, what would be an appropriate amount of money, uh, for council to allocate to ensure that that important project is supported?
I mean, that is something we could look at. We definitely need a consultant and that would, um, that would work well with the zoning rewrite or be, could be complimentary to the zoning rewrite. We could look into that and, and let you give you.
And such an expenditure would be a one-time project based cost, of course, given that this is. Okay. Great. Thank you. All the person Fabrizio.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, and I, I recognize that the vacancy list is, um, is still a work in progress, but I do have questions about this that I hope you can answer as the, as the head of the department. Um, when I look at this, it looks like there are about 20, uh, funded vacant positions. Several of them are for, from 2021. Some of them are from 2022 and 2023. So.
Yeah. I'm sorry. There, there, apparently there were some, there were some positions that were not in my department, that were listed in my department. We have currently, how many vacancies?
I'm going to just interject really quick because I've spoken to both of you separately on this and then the city manager. So this is, as you and I have discussed, very important to get clarity on. As the city manager said, that's the priority for answering into perspective council question. I understand that there is, uh, there's a, there's an, there's a data aggregation element that then funnels through our HR department. Um, I would rather, uh, give the administration a little bit more time to get as up to date information as possible, uh, given that there may be some discrepancies that I don't think on the spot are, uh, any department leadership is, is, uh, is going to be well equipped to answer at this time. I think that I would recommend, and you're welcome to pursue your line of questioning. Uh, but I would recommend to council, if you have, uh, vacancy specific questions, that we, we save those until next week, um, when we have further deliberations and have, uh, a little bit more time to get as accurate data as possible. Uh, you, you are re-recognized all the person.
Mayor, can I just add one quick thing?
You are.
I just want to make sure that the work that the staff completes this week is actually going to get at like the need or the concern, right? So I'm assuming that the thread of your question is that, are there any additional possible positions that we could consider defunding in order to gain more flexibility for you to add OTRs, right? I'm assuming that's why you're asking the questions. Okay. I just want to make sure that as we go through there, I will do the work with that in mind. And so I think we already put, we already defunded what we felt we could defund with this budget. But I'm happy to go back and sort of take a look through and do another scrub and see if there was anything else in there, um, additional. I think some of these numbers of when, why the, when these positions have been vacant are a little bit deceiving. I just need to get some additional information from our, uh, new HR person who can help me understand why she's represented it on this sheet that way. But if the lens you're looking at it from is, is there any additional potential money on the table or savings? That's the way that I will approach the work. And you just got to give us till the end of the week in order to get through that.
Thank you. I would like to be able to still see the, uh, vacated dates. So I would like to see that, that information included in the, in the new reporting. Um, so just to maybe, um, confirm, this is a follow-up with, with Clyde's question with regard to, um, it sounds like, like you're thinking to be able to finish the work on the comprehensive, uh, comprehensive look at zoning and, and planning and all of that. That you would need to contract that out. And I'm just looking at your, you've got like $67,000 in, in that budget. So is that what you would conceivably use that for? Do you have that in mind earmarked for some other kind of contract work?
So, um, that con, so that contract line has, is not that work. We have a grant for the zoning rewrite.
Oh, right. Okay.
The mayor just asked now about what the price, what the contract amount would be if we had to contract out an update to the comp plan, which I don't have that number. That, the $67,000 are other con, other lines.
And what would we be using the contract work for, the 67,000?
So, um, hang on just a sec. So the contract line doesn't really change much from year to year. Um, it has, it includes, um, a $20,000 contract for, um, a, um, basically a consulting firm that helps us match, uh, grant opportunities and helps, takes us through grant opportunities and helps us match on the federal level.
Don't we, don't we now have a, a person who's, who we hired specifically to keep an eye out for all of the grants?
She works very closely with them to identify. They help, they have a strategic lens on federal grants that we don't have and we couldn't have because they're based in Washington. We've been using them for years. Um, and they have helped us successfully, get multiple earmarks.
And the.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Uh, we have to host our, we, we have a property database that we still use and still has data in it in the building division. Um, we have moved to open gov, but we have to continue to, um, use the data in the property database. And that is a contract that, um, is a particular amount of money. Um, we did have, um, we had, so we had, um, we have, uh, hosting of the short-term rental, uh, third-party monitoring. So those are the main ones and legal and planning services.
So legal, I'm, I'm just wondering, um, I'm also just, you know, I've looked at the legal. It looks like we still have like a hundred thousand dollars, um, between the city manager's budget. And, and I didn't really look to see if you had, I didn't see legal in yours. I'm just thinking, we, we funded another position for the in-house legal. And I'm hoping that we're not going to need to spend so much money on outside, uh, people. So I'm just wondering what you think about that.
Well, the legal and planning services has been really helpful to us in particular situations, particularly with the quasi judicial boards. Sometimes it's really helpful and efficient to talk to somebody who does land use law exclusively, particularly with, you know, situations with the quasi judicial boards. And they, you know, they have that expertise because they practice it all the time. And we have used them.
Okay.
And it's been very helpful.
Um, and I just wanted to ask about the, um, staff development line. So it looks like in 2023, that was at about just under $12,000. Then it bumped up to 24,000 and now, and then it went up to 30,000 for this year. Um, do you have any idea like how much of that has been used?
So, um, the, it was not 12,000. That was the actuals that was, that were spent that year. It's been about 24, let me see, 23, 20, 24, 25,000 dollars for years. It got bumped up last year because we knew that, um, we were going to have to buy code books. This, in the staff development line has, it's not conferences and it, it is some training, but a lot of it is.
Materials.
Supporting materials that are needed for, um, particularly the code inspectors, uh, to do their job. And so it has been the same, that particular year, we didn't spend that much money, but it has been the same.
So typically.
Before there's a follow-up on this, I just want to, because that was five, I will come back to you, but I want to recognize all the person Shapiro, just so that we're keeping this as we discussed.
Yeah, I just have like.
One quick follow-up, then yes.
So then you're anticipating it's more like around the, the $12,000? The actual that was spent in 2023 or you're anticipating it's more the 25-ish?
If that's what it says, the actuals that were spent in 2023, I would say that is an accurate number. Sometimes.
A little bit more.
Sometimes there are reasons why the whole, um, amount doesn't get spent. I don't know. I don't, I'd have to go back and see what was happening.
Okay.
In that year, maybe we were filling positions or I, I don't know what was happening in that year, but that's the actuals that were spent, not what was allocated.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All the person Shapiro, recognized in no more than five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll need the full amount this year because we'll, we will be bringing on newer staff and they do need training. And the code, yeah, we need code books this year.
Well, just start, thank you for submitting what looks like to be a responsible budget. So I appreciate the work you put into that. I'm certain it wasn't, um, easy for you to do. Um, I'll ask a few questions that I emailed earlier today and try to get them knocked off of Deb's list. And maybe we can get to six pages by the end of the night.
I'll get, I'll transcribe what you say and then it'll save me, uh, half an hour.
Okay. It sounded like you do still employ a grant writer, but did I hear you say that person works out of DC? That's not a criticism. I just wasn't sure if I heard that.
Last year, uh, we brought on a grant, or the year before, brought on a grant administrator who does grant writing as well, but, um, also does much work to increase the whole organization's capacity to identify, um, and get grants.
And we also have a grant writer?
No, we don't have.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Is that person local?
Yes.
Did I hear? Okay. I, I misunderstood what you said. I apologize. Is any part of that person's responsibility to solicit, uh, sponsorships within the community or strictly federal grants or state probably? It's all grants. Okay. Thank you.
Um, she has helped us get grants for $10,000 from the county and, you know, state grants for hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay. I appreciate that. Can you tell me if, hopefully, um, I think there was an email and forgive me. I don't, I didn't see the, if there were details in it, but there was about $75,000 from prior years and encumbrances in your budget. Can you describe what those projects are?
Sure. Um, I, and, um, I don't know exactly what data you were looking at, but encumbrances are, we use encumbrances to, um, uh, carry money forward that wasn't spent in the previous year. Um, and often it's used for the same purpose. For, so for instance, one of the things that is in our budget and was encumbered year over year, but I'm encumbering it for next year and then taking it out, which is why the contracts line has gotten smaller, was a $40,000 allocation that was put in several years ago for a housing study, which hasn't been done yet, but I want to do the, want that money and want it, want to do it. So that's one. Um, we also had, um, yeah, I wrote these down, so, but. Oh, college town beautification. Several years ago, council decided to allocate, um, every year in, or allocate and had decided multiple years to allocate $20,000 for college town beautification. That money was encumbered year over year. That money was encumbered year over year, so it wasn't spent. And so we're pausing that now so that it can be, there could be a plan made for it and it can be spent this coming year. So.
That's actually, I appreciate you saying that. So given what we heard from, and you'll have to forgive me, I think her name is Nan. But what she talked about, the commons downtown and the beautification of it. Can any of those encumbered funds for college town be brought into beautifying the downtown commons area?
Well, I mean, so.
Or do you have other funds set aside? Maybe is a better question, Patrick?
Department of Planning doesn't have, and Development doesn't have an allocation of funds for the commons. However, there is a commons fund in the DPW budget. And we do work with DPW staff to identify things that need to be done. That, you know, and for instance, you know, we just replaced the planters on West State Street by Nan and I working together and getting, and, and with Hammerstone to rebuild the planters. And that came out of the college town, that came out of the commons fund that is not part of my department. But we kind of work around it and identify things that need to be done.
Are those the planters we've received many emails about?
No, no, different, different.
Okay. I'll, I'll move off of that. That's a different conversation. That's all I have for you today. Thank you very much. Hopefully some of those were knocked off your list, Deb. Any members who have not spoken, all the persons in the press.
Obviously, as we all know, we're, we're pulling back this year. In terms of where the department would be going, were we not pulling back versus what we're looking at with this kind of pullback? How would you describe the impacts on department operations?
So we are, the primary impact is, I think, defunding the one planner position. We're hoping that that can get refunded in future years. It works in 2026 to defund it because we have a fair amount of vacancies and it will take time to, once we fill them to bring people up, you know, to speed, work at either skills or working within the organization, you know, so we, so that, that works for this year. We would hope that next year we could refund that position. I just want to say that it takes about four FTE, that's not for specific people, but for FD in general, just to carry out the core duties of our department, core required duties that aren't long-term planning and zoning rewrite. And then projects that we all want to do. So, uh, yeah, so that, you know, we would basically limit our capacity to do additional projects. But we do have the zoning rewrite that we're definitely undertaking and a few other projects that we're definitely undertaking. We can do that for this year.
So what I'm hearing is that the department can take a year to kind of orient itself, build up experience and expertise. But this is not long-term sustainable for the department. Understood.
Old person Brown.
Hi, the question, but you kind of answered it for me because projects on the common is not for the planning department. That, that little thing they made, like a, it's supposed to be spreading water and stuff like that right over there near the bank.
Yes.
That has not worked since they put it there. That cost millions. Who do I talk to about that? Or who want to get information about that?
So my department helps coordinate things and tries to connect people and bring people together and find these solutions. But that's a very difficult one and we've been working on that for quite some time. The, the reason that the fountain isn't working is underground situation that would, but it's DPW staff works. We work collaboratively with DPW and, and the DIA. They have the money, but we try to work with how to get things done.
All right.
It doesn't come out of my budget.
Is there a final question? We have two more departments and I will not recognize more than one, one final question, especially if some of them have been submitted in writing. So if, if you have a question that has not been submitted in writing, so we can get to the other two departments. We have, you know, an hour allocated for each.
I do have a clarifying question.
Thank you.
To follow up on David with the 73,000 that's in the actuals for 2023 under the encumbrances. So in this year and last year as well, and this year 2026, it's zero. So you're, you were talking about carrying over 40,000 or whatever, I'm sorry, whatever you said. I don't, I don't see that. I'm just questioning, is this, is this correct? Or are you?
I haven't made the encumbrance yet because you make them at the end of the year, but that would be my intention.
It's made at the end of the year. Well, how will that help us when we go through the budget process now? And we're trying to come up with extra money here and there to do the things that were not included in this budget when it was given to us, but instead we're putting to over target requests?
So I think that you can, if I'm understanding the question correctly, you can rely on the number that I'm giving you because I'm saying that I'm not including those in my budget, the money I'm encumbering is from this year.
Right. But it's just an impossible.
Old person, I appreciate that. There was one question and so we're not going to continue on this. I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone who has not spoken with question for the planning department? All right. With that, thank you all for being here this evening and for providing this budget to us. With that, I will, well, I guess we won't welcome up the city attorney and we'll just kind of like look over here at him unless, all right, go over there. There are, there are also no OTRs for.
No, no, we just put that, it's as folded in, it's in, it's not, it's not.
That was like a, the, the OTR prequel, if you will.
It was fit within the budget we've, that was already present.
Yes. The, the, the city manager cleared OTR. It's on the larger. I, I don't have the first page of the thing open in front of me, but point being, city attorney is here to answer any questions. There's no over and above ask for this office that has not been included as part of the sort of maintenance of effort, OTR approvals, the city manager has provided for on the first page of the budget. So are there any questions for the city attorney on his department's budget? All the person St. Perez, you recognize for no more than five minutes.
I apologize. This is slightly more generalized than simply your budget. But I noticed that the workers' compensation line has septupled. I was initially concerned that, that we were subjecting our lawyers to significantly more risks. However, I noticed that this is completely across, completely across the budget. We've seen increases in workers' compensation in numerous departments. I'm just curious as to if there's a reason for that. It adds up to hundreds of thousands of dollars combined.
I actually don't know the answer to that one. That particular line under fringe is something that gets calculated on the backend. I'm not aware of any attorney's office workers' comp claims lately. I hope that I would have heard about them had somebody, you know, been injured in a courtroom or something. So I, I don't have the answer to that, that question. I would, I would defer to, to Wendy or, or the city manager about what went into that particular line.
Yeah, I'm just looking really quickly. That could also be the way that the, that particular pot of money is represented in past years versus this year, but we will add that to our list of things to clarify. But I'm pretty sure it's just because it wasn't reflected this way. And now that we're using open gov to show it this way, but I will, I will clear that up. Especially because now I'm looking at it across the other departments. It does look like it is something feeding from the workforce plan in that is just being fed to a different budget line than it was in previous years, but we'll find that out.
Understood. Thank you. That is all.
All the person for Britti.
Yeah. Hi, Victor. Um, I just want to check again on the, well, first let me, let me just ask. You're completely fully staffed at this point, correct?
That's correct.
And during this year, we authorized another position in your office. Can you remind me, was that full time or part time?
A halftime position was upgraded to a full-time position.
Halftime was upgraded to a full-time position. And how many people are currently in the office?
So it's myself, our administrative assistant, three full-time attorneys and one halftime attorney who serves as the city prosecutor.
And just for the, for the public and your budgets, nine, proposed $926,433 for, for 2026. So I just want, I just really have a question about, about contracts. You know, I bring this up a lot. So I, I know that a lot of the legal work that we have outsourced doesn't appear in your contracts line and that it in fact is in the city manager's contracts line. So when you put those two together, and I don't have the city manager one in front of me, but I think that was $96,000 that was in there and you have $33,000 in yours. So my, so my point is now that you are fully staffed, are you anticipating that there will be less outsourcing of legal work?
There's a couple of different questions in there and I'd be happy to answer them. First, just as a point of information, that contracts line is not exclusively for outside legal work. It's in fact mostly not for that. So of that 33,000, about 10,000 goes to foil software, which has enabled us to process foils or will enable us, we're implementing it this year, to process foils much more efficiently and reduce our staffing needs across the department. Another 10,000 is for our legal research software, which we need to do legal research, which we need to provide advice. And then the balance is just kind of miscellaneous contracts. We actually took a really hard look this year at our contracts line. We are using our additional staffing to reduce reliance on outside attorneys for investigations and sort of routine things. And we are really trying to bring a lot of stuff in-house where possible. Speaking as to what the city uses outside attorneys for, those tend to be more specialized services or things that we just don't have the capacity to handle internally. Those fall into a couple of buckets. One is sort of labor negotiation expertise. That's the one that's in the city manager's line. We are, will continue to rely on an outside firm because that's an extremely specialized area. As Lisa mentioned, you know, they have a small contract line for outside legal services for really kind of wonky land use stuff, is how I would phrase it. That's the sort of thing where, you know, you can clear up a question with a phone call to them that would probably take us a week or two to research. So if you compare the staff time that it would take to dig into those sorts of projects, it's, it's actually a pretty big savings. The last category where we tend to rely on outside legal services is for big litigations. So if somebody falls into a gorge or there's some sort of other, you know, toward incident, we, we farm those out. And that's typically reflected in our, in the judgment and claims account, or I think there's another line for those. And ultimately there's an insurance component to those as well. So those are things that we can't really do in-house that we, I mean, absent some sort of massive increase in staffing, we won't have the capacity to do in-house.
Where, where would we see the judgment and claims line? Is that in the, in the legal?
That is not within, within my budget. I'm not, I don't know that account number offhand.
Okay. And then of the money that's in the city manager's line for contracts, do you have any guess of what amount of that is sort of earmarked for legal?
I don't know. That's not, not in my budget.
Okay. So that's something that you wouldn't being engaged with at all? You mean that would be like a decision?
I would reserve comments for the city manager's budget for the city manager.
Okay.
Great briefing evening.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah. I mean, substantively, we work with those attorneys, but it's, it's not a, a decision about, you know, whether we're engaging them or not.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Next on my list is all the person Brown.
I have a question. You said that your department is fully staffed, right?
Correct.
And so I'm trying to understand if one of, I think her name, if she left her department to go and work in human resources, doesn't that leave, so really I'm asking the question of what happens with that money? Is she still being paid through, as an attorney, or she's paid through another, some other fund that we can ask about, right? Because if she left, then you're not fully staffed.
So I have an assistant city attorney who's currently serving as acting director of HR. She is temporarily being paid out of the HR line. She will be returning to us very shortly, I believe. So that, that position is open. So what we're talking about today is the budget for 2026 and any, any underspent money for 2025, I believe, returned to the fund balance.
Yes.
Yes.
Next on my list is all the person Letterman.
I was just going to ask about how much was in the judgment and claims line, but that sounds like a question for a different time. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. At this time, I'll also welcome up Chief Kelly and DC Bellamy. As a reminder to counsel, there are OTRs for this department. So I will afford the administration a few minutes to walk through their OTRs and make a justification for those requests. Remember, we will not be making any determinations tonight. This is just information collection. And then I will open it up to a conversation about their overall budget. So I'll just wait a moment. And with that, chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Deputy Chief Cowan unfortunately could not be here this evening. His grandfather had passed away recently, so he's with his family. We have a couple, yeah, OTRs that we had presented. We've been pretty busy the last couple of years in, on the Reimagine project in partnership with the Criminal Justice Center and a number of our different outreach partners. Our goal is, is enhancement of community safety. And that's, that's our mission. That's what drives everything that, that we do. We are tremendously supportive of alternative response, of deflection, of harm reduction and anywhere where we can minimize harmful law enforcement interactions. But one of the things that we've learned statewide is how essential law enforcement is in community safety. And this is not just the stereotypical, you know, occupying force or showing up and dealing with crises when, when things are at their worst. This involves the, being present at public events, being part of the events at the schools, handling and responding to people with empathy and compassion at times of crisis. And what we've seen over these last few years across the state is these partnerships with the CGS, with different cities, with our county partners, with the DA's office, with New York State Police, with parole probation, outreach groups to reduce harm and to get people in a direction and the assistance that they need, whether they're, you know, whatever community they're in and, you know, they're in a black community, if they're in a white community, Hispanic community, if they're an immigrant. You know, our job is, is really to serve everybody. And we've seen time and time again, especially over the last two years in Ithaca, how these programs work. We've had a lot of tremendous successes and we have a lot of continuous struggles. I know I'm on a short time constraint here. Some of the members from the, the lead program had sent me some stories. I can forward them onto the group to share so many struggles. Firsthand, some of these interactions, there was a couple that was constantly fighting. They were setting up their tent in Duitt Park. They had set it up down on the sidewalk at CVS. We had sent outreach workers there. We had gone down and worked with them as law enforcement, gained a lot of valuable information from them and the, the struggles that they were facing. We in turn, in working with outreach groups and working with Dominic Recio, were able to secure housing, but that housing wasn't available for five days. And it was going into a weekend and, and sure. And sure enough, like they had an altercation, a physical altercation that needed a police response. Somebody had stabbed a vehicle tire. Somebody had hit somebody with a, with a wooden bat and they were arrested. And they weren't going to prison. They were going to jail for a few days and that housing was gone. I, I can't explain that. I think it's wrong. I don't know how those hurdles can't be crossed, how we can't delay that, that housing for them to work through those legal difficulties for a week. They came back out and had more struggles because the housing was gone. And we went back to square one and tried to secure housing for them with all of these different partners. In the end, housing was secured. They continued to struggle. They continued to get calls for drunken disorderly conduct, for causing fights, more intensive conversations with clinicians and, and working in partnership with, with Dominic. People took, took action. And I, I know that, I'm not going to wood, this isn't real wood, but it's been a while since we've, since we've heard, I heard one name come up recently, but they have not had those same day-to-day occurrences. They may have law enforcement contact again. And honestly, that's why these relationships are so important, that we are working together so we can continue to make those handoffs and get them back away from law enforcement contact and get them back to a better place. One of them actually has career ambitions. The other one, well, she, she actually said we were hiring an IPD and she thought we should, so let's, let's crawl first before we, we have this conversation. But they, at, at the end of the day, when, when they're in a good place and when their needs are being met, like they are, they are successful and they are, they can be productive and members of the society and not have police contact. So with that said, there was a couple of things that, you know, that are really important to us. One is our care team clinician, you know, our community alternative response and engagement does so much work with the police department. But then she does so much work beyond with officers on the street and follow-up with all the different organizations that she works with the ACT, with the hospital, with Whole Health, with other private organizations. And we're looking to bring on a second member. She currently, right now, it's about 100, I had the numbers pulled up before. She has her law enforcement references. She has, it's broken down in a spreadsheet that I had sent out earlier this afternoon. But each one of those contacts that she has is multiple follow-ups. Like a low-risk person might have one or two follow-ups. Somebody high-risk, that might be 10 additional follow-ups. And if she's averaging five follow-ups a day, you know, throughout the week, 25 follow-ups, it starts to add up and it's, it's several thousand potential deflections. Not all, but some of those in getting somebody into treatment or getting the assistance they need and getting connected with services is reducing law enforcement contacts. I definitely will answer more, more questions than that. The other program is a program that Ms. Phoebe Brown had provided assistance with us for the last 18 months. We've been working on finding a not-for-profit that would sponsor a violence interrupter, a credible, credible messenger from the community that had respect in the community that could respond and, and help cooler heads prevail, deter people from participating in violence if they were victim of violence, actually helping family and helping support. And again, deflecting calls from, from law enforcement. That's a program that's partially funded by Give. It's not fully funded. We would like to add another person to, to assist our current, the current person that's working this program. They're not an employee of the police department. They're contracted by Second Wind Cottages. We reimburse for, for the work that they do. And I, because it's, it's obviously it's a great, it's a great partnership. And I, I'm sure Phoebe can, can speak to that. She was very instrumental in helping us get that off the ground. The, a couple of things right now that are, that are, I wouldn't say extras. I, I will say the wellness clinician was something that was talked about with Reimagine. For some reason, and I don't know the full story behind this. I, I was told that a chief had said that they didn't want it and it's no longer available, but it's clearly something that is, is desired, bless you. It is something that, and I, I heard a number of the community members talk about today, how difficult and how dramatic the experience of law enforcement can be. We do have officers that do struggle from time to time with the things that they see and do. Yeah. And so, I mean, I've known officers that have died, that have taken their lives. And so it is something that is very important and something that we should visit. I certainly will be looking in the grant realm and how we can support it. The in-car audio and video, we do not have at this time. We have the body cameras, something that we're going to have to be talking about in the near future because of the size of the databases that are required to keep this type of evidence. But we'd like to expand and we talk about accountability and transparency and having that in the vehicle as well. Not just in the front of vehicle, but in the backseat of the vehicle for when we're transporting people in the vehicle to, to have that. The additional lieutenant position, this is something I've, I've talked with the city manager about in the past, whether it would be a civilian in coordinating outreach or coordinating these, all these diversion-type programs, or whether a lieutenant would be a more suitable position. We do have, we do have officers in a department that have backgrounds in outreach, that have degrees in, in different types of services that are very supportive of the work that we're doing as an agency and the culture change in a department. One lieutenant in particular that comes to mind, Lieutenant Rosia does, does a lot of work. I know she knows a lot, a lot of members on council and is, you know, would be very well-supported in this position. And then also the officers, per four additional officers is 314,000. We are not at full staffing. My request is that we add the positions to unfunded until at what time we're able to fill those positions. And then we would come back to the council and request funding for those. So those are the, the OTRs that we had presented.
Thank you very much, chief. At this time, we'll take OTR-specific questions and then we can go to overall departmental budget questions. All the person Letterman, you're recognized for no more than five minutes.
Sure. Thank you, chief, and thanks for providing a lot of detail in your email about this. And I was going to say, you know, I am routinely just very impressed with the level of case-specific outreach IPD does. Just appreciate your leadership on that. And yeah, it's just, it's unusual to hear about that sort of level of continued engagements. I really appreciate you also focusing and investing in that more going forward. Just with that care team person, is there, it sounds like there's another person in that position ready to be hired there?
Yes. We've been in, in talks with Whole Health because they're, they're a clinician, they're licensed. They ask that they're technically a whole health employee because you have to have supervisor and routine evaluations to maintain that certification. So they have somebody that is very interested in the position. She actually helped fill in for a little bit when, when our last care team clinician was out for childcare. And, but their concern is that we're going to fund the position because they don't want to send somebody over, fill a vacancy, have somebody in limbo that's not, that's not budgeted for. So they, they want to know that and they understand that it's not something we could say, yeah, we'll do this for three years, but at least if we're able to commit to the next year, they'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay. And you, do you feel that would double your volume in terms of the number of outreaches and touches they have in the community? Right? Because it's just one person in that role right now?
Yes. I mean, Kristen is, she's very, she's a hard worker. She's definitely overtaxed and she's not just responding to, to calls. She, she's also following up on different caseloads. She's also available for some of our most traumatized victims in helping people through the, the process and healing.
Well, thank you. And in terms of the partnership you mentioned with Second Wind about the Violence Interrupter program, what would you envision sort of, and I'll say no, send this in your email, but just for this public certification, that person doing? And yeah, how would they fit into sort of the response model right now?
So what they've been, they've been doing, and they were doing this work before we were able to, to fund them. Is there somebody that they previously homeless in the jungle for a number of years? They have connections with a lot of people that are living on, on the street and, and some people who, you know, get, get into mischief and they're able to kind of be the voice of reason and redirect some of that behavior. Sometimes people call them and they respond. A lot of the officers have known this person over the years, have, have had good rapport. He actually, they can call him directly and ask him. I know recently there was a call at Astari where it was a subject that, so checked the well, health and welfare. He didn't want to come out. He didn't want to talk to the, to the care team. And Anes actually, actually was able to, to talk them to the door and convince like, hey, let me, let me go get some food. I'll come back, we'll talk. And because we were able to kind of put together a safety plan and didn't feel like at that point he was a threat to himself or anyone else, we could hand that off and, and have Anes follow up with him.
All right. But yeah, thank you for that context. That's very helpful. Yeah. And I'll just say, you know, I really appreciate these and glad we're focused on sort of doing this, these types of interventions. This seems great. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shapiro, you're recognized for no more than five minutes.
I think I've said this before, but I just want to say again, thank you for continuing to show us your humanity. I so appreciate seeing that in a leader of a public, public safety department. I especially appreciate seeing men who are willing to share their feelings publicly. So I, I appreciate that and I appreciate you. Couple of questions. As you know, I used to work for Second Wind, so I know their focus is on homelessness. As the Violence Interrupter, are they geographically responding to like the jungle, Astari, Arthouse? Or are they responding to things in other geographic areas of the city as well?
He is working throughout the city. Because like this relationship, he is not a city police employee. Like we don't come to him and ask him for information. Everything he does is through Second Wind. And Second Wind, you know, is, is contracts with him, you know, to do this work. So I know that he does respond when we call him down to places like Astari. I know he, he goes down to the jungle. He, he also recently took a position with Reach. So during the day, he is a Reach employee. He is trained and offered different programs through Reach. For us, he's on call. He's an overnight, he's an evening shift and to, to do this type of work that he's doing. So it is, it's, it's all over. It's down in the commons. Sometimes, I mean, he'll be down in the commons all day and all evening. At times I'm like, go home. Like you need to like take a rest and, and take care of yourself. But he is, he's definitely very committed to, to serve in the community.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. I'm not sure if I heard you correctly about the, all of the OTRs. It sounded like that you were hoping to put these in the budget into what is presently vacant police positions and then come back to us for a different request in the future? Is that the same as an OTR? Is that different? Can you explain that?
Originally, we were asking for four additional positions. We, we get a lot of requests for a lot of different, from the commons, from the schools, from our doubt. Our, our Part One crimes are continuing to trend down, but large cities have pretty, pretty consistent across the board. And so there's, we get a lot of requests for different things. Traffic enforcement, a lot more things we're doing at the school, the large community events and festivals that, that we host in the city. So we're looking at, at this point for those additional positions. I am optimistic in meeting our positions, filling our positions by next year. And we're looking to add additional positions. So what I, what I say additional four, we're willing to take them not funded and, and we revisit them when we're able to fill them, when we have applicants in the pipeline. We would ask for that funding at, at that time.
But those four are currently in your regular budget, not the, no?
No. No, it's additional. They're, they're not, they're not in there. We're looking for them to be added as, as, so we're budgeted right now for 69. We'd like to be 69 with, you know, 73, including four unfunded positions.
Okay. I think I understand, but that's, that's all listed in the bullets on this, with the four year?
Yes.
Those are, okay.
I didn't, I, when I responded to your email earlier, like I included like, I, I think the number two priorities of programs that we're very, very active in and, and want to see continue, want to see succeed, especially with the calls for, you know, an alternative response to the community.
Okay.
I'll just interrupt for one second. I'm going to add this to my list of things to talk to HR about when we talk about the vacancy report. Like is there a way to reflect? Because really we're talking about rostering positions versus funding positions. So I'll learn a little bit more about that and maybe give you some more information about if that's possible.
Sure. Thank you. I'll just, I don't expect you to know this answers, so I'll just kind of ask it. I did read your reply and I gently looked through the spreadsheets that you sent. And I'd be curious to know if you're tracking geographic region within the city of Ithaca that the Violence Interrupter is responding to?
So the Violence Interrupter, I'd have, I'd have a conversation with Second Wind Cottages. Because again, I don't want to compromise that confidentiality and we want him to be trusted that, you know, he's not, doesn't work for us. He works kind of with us. But for the care team, there is a map attached in that PDF of the calls that there is a mental health documentation or follow-up. So the care team would go to a call and they might have an assist where they're doing certain guidance to the officer on how to proceed, but they're not actually taking that call over as a mental health referral. And then there's, there's the reports where it's actually like, we need to get services to this person and connect them in a system because they're, they're not, they're not already there. And that, those are in the dashboard and there's kind of a map around the city and there's the purple circles that get bigger when there's more calls in that region, kind of illustrating where things happen.
Thank you.
My next speaker is all the person Brown. You're recognized for five minutes.
Thank you. So I have a few questions and things. So for this new person to be working with you as the clinician, right? I'm just thinking that, that as an unarmed responder, it would make it like, so unarmed responder doing that work, is, is it not? So, so we're talking about adding, so, so what I'm saying is the budget for the unarmed responder is really this so-called pilot program, which means for a pilot program is only going to be for a year. But if we're taking about, if we're talking about adding money for another person to do sort of clinician-type work, was it, wouldn't the unarmed responder or someone from that team can do sort of the same work as this person that is going to be hired to do this work? Is, is that something to just look at or something to just talk about?
I definitely think there's a conversation to be had around what, what the goals are and what the services are that we need to, to, to provide. Because there are, you know, people in, in like the Violence Interrupter that he's not a clinician. He, he doesn't have the ability to get somebody connected to, to those types of services. But he's trusted. He's an incredible messenger. I mean, and I've seen him tell people like, simply like, no, 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 you're, you're not going to do that. And they're like, okay. And so it takes a person also that has that relationship within the community. I mean, some of the people, it, it's modeled around, the Violence Interrupter is modeled around that, the SLUG program.
But that's not the provision I'm talking about. But, but, but I guess what you, you're saying, but I, I thought the, the unarmed responder would have a lot of those same skills. That was what was asked for in Reimagining the Public Safety, but I may be.
Well, and that's something that you have, you, you don't just have those skills. You have to develop.
Yeah.
Why, why I'm so supportive of, of what we're doing now is because we have a lot of success stories and we have those people coming to the table and working together that trust each other and working. And we have those people coming to the table and working together that trust each other and working for for a common goal and in helping somebody move forward. And as as we've seen in this last year, we've had, I could tell you a number of success stories. I could tell you some not success stories that we continue to struggle with, as I know you're you're aware. But having everybody at the table with all of those different experiences and being able to wrap around services offers somebody that best chance to to succeed. Some people we know, like, we we try, we try so hard and and it's not a choice that they're ready to make and we just have to keep trying.
Keep trying, yes. So another question is, I just, maybe about a week ago, coming to one of these meetings, I was almost ran down by one of the new police officers that rides the bike. And I think he said he's the one and only. It was an officer who was on the bike. Now, y'all don't have a guy that rides the bike?
There have been some officers that have been taking a bikes out. There's, there's.
Oh, maybe he was taking the bike out. And that was my question. When you talk about four new officers, is that in mind? Because that was something that was also asked from community to bring back, you know, officers who were on the bike. I don't know. But I tell you, I seen him. Now you're making me like.
No, 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 there's definitely been officers out. I can't tell if this is a complaint or a compliment.
A little of both.
I was, I'm very sorry. I.
No, 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 I was just teasing. No, I was coming out the store and he was coming around the corner and I was walking in. So I didn't know, I hadn't yet seen officers on the bike. So that's why I was asking, are they stay back? He said he was the only one. And so when if.
He might have been the only one that night that was able to.
That's why I was asking, when you talk about former officers, is that plan in sort of in motion? Sort of going to be in motion too. There's some of them will be back out on on the bikes.
Yes, yes. I I back on bikes, back in the parks, back on the Commons. We've been doing a lot of work on the Commons when, you know, we have an extra officer staffed where we're actually assigned into the Commons.
Right.
I took all her time.
I know.
For some time back.
It's just to keep us circulating. We can, we can come back if there's burning questions. Aldo Person Matos.
This is pertaining only to the OTR, OTRs, right? Okay. So for the clin- the care team clinician, that's a hundred, a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars a year for the year. And a hun- and then for the wellness clinician, that's a hundred thousand a year. Does this include fringe benefits as well?
This includes fringe and with this, and we took a slightly different approach than than the county. And I should give the county proper credit for Jen Owen for her work on putting this program together. But with the county, they're assigned to an officer. And if an officer's not working, the officer has time off or an officer retires, like that clinician is now at the station. For us, the clinicians are a resource for the officers, so they can ride with any officer. So adding a clinician does not mean that they need to have another officer, just ideally for us, one is working the day shift and then there's some overlap and the other overlap and the other one's working the the evening shift. But his clinician, and that gets us the clinician at the department, there's no other expenses to that.
And then for clarification, you said the care team clinicians are employed through the county?
Yes.
And we are responsible for the fringe benefits, even though they're employed through the county?
They're, they're dedicated to us. They have all the resources available through the county, but they're dedicated to us, to the city for whatever we ask of of them.
Yeah, I just don't think I agree that if they're a county employee, we should be covering covering fringe benefits. But that, that's all my comments on OTRs, OTRs, sorry.
Thank you. My next speaker is Aldo Person Wen.
Regarding the four additional officers, can you help me understand, or remind, I know I ask you like monthly, but the vacancies are, how many people in the academy? But can you, if, and I can email this, if you don't have this, that's off your head. But in twenty twenty-five, how many, you know, laterals and new recruits do we, did we get? How many vacancies do we currently have now? And how does that inform your, your, your hope that you will be able to fill everyone in twenty-six?
So our year has been three steps forward, two back. We've, we're moving forward, but we've had retirements along the way. We do have three more anticipated retirements over the next six months. We have two coming out of the academy. We have a couple laterals we're looking at. We basically right now puts us at nine vacancies. We have five to six candidates that we're looking to start in the academy at the end of this month in Syracuse. And we have a brand new list, a brand new test that was given on the twentieth of September. We had seventy people sign up to take the test. Typically candidates, we, one in ten makes it through the process. So giving the numbers and where we're trending right now, I I foresee us, you know, by summer having staff in the academy. But the five that we send to the academy at the end of this month, like, they won't be on the road trained until late spring, early summer. So we're, we're continuing, like, we're playing a lot of catch up after, after the last few years here. We definitely see the, we see the increase, the subtle increase. Last year, we had two officers that came back to IPD. So they, their FTO training was a much quicker process because they're very familiar with the department. We did have two, three, we hired, one dropped out of the academy that's in there now. And then earlier in the year, we had one go through the Syracuse Academy as well. I can get you the exact numbers. It's sometimes it's, I have to write this stuff down because there's so much movement. We have also hired a deputy chief, which helps out. He's counted it days. He's like, it's day five. He's like, are you hazing me or am I? So, but that, you know, these positions, like, they, they, you know, when you fill positions, like, we, we have two promotions as well. Later this month, we'll send the invite out for official swearing in for the two new officers, two new sergeants and deputy chief. As you fill positions, there's only so many, you know, officers, like, we, we need the officers on the street doing police work.
Yeah, I'm just, I forget if it was last year, my memory is terrible, but we restored some positions, I think. City manager had cut or the last mayor had cut. I can, I also, I don't remember. But in the hopes that you would fill them, but we do seem to have this perpetual vacancy issue. And you're, you know, projecting three retirements, that's twelve vacancies. It does seem ambitious that we able, be able to fill them in twenty twenty-six.
Seventy new applicants that will be coming in, the test scores will be back usually in November, December. So it's that coupled with the positions that we are going to fill the end of this month is, I I am optimistic.
I feel like I've sworn in like fifteen or sixteen people in the last two years, just for this department. Plus retirements. Aldo Person Letterman, you're next. No, I'm sorry. You've been, you've already spoken to this. You can come back in the circulation, but Aldo Person Fabrizio is next.
Thank you so much. Wow. I'm just continually impressed with how many touch points you have within the, within the community, between the Community Justice Center, the Care Team, Reach, Lead, this Violence Interrupter program, which I didn't know anything about until the last, the last couple of days. And it sounds like you have been reimagining public safety during these, during these years and that you have been making these really strong connections. And honestly, it sounds like, like what we're doing is very much what we've been talking about doing, like what we're projecting doing with roots. It sounds like we are well on our way and we have existing programs that, that really very much parallel those ideas. And I I'd be really interested to talk with both of you, you know, off, out of, out of here, just to sort of get your, get your thoughts and really explore that. I I just wanted to ask about the outreach worker a little bit more, the, the Violence Interrupter person. So you said that they were on, they were on call. So is this like, so basically we're paying and we're doing an hourly wage or there's a salary? This is like an estimated amount that you would use during the course of the year? Or how how are we paying them?
So that, that's an estimated amount. Right now, we're paying them through a grant. And it's, he's a private contractor for Second Wind, so he doesn't, there's no fringe, there's no minimum recall, like, he gets paid for what he goes in and does. And so he'll submit to them a time sheet, you know, with what he's doing. And then Second Wind in turn, like, this is like, this is, this is what he worked this week.
So they, they, it's so basically like they're billing us, they add some overhead or something?
Yes, a percentage of overhead because they have attorneys and.
Yeah, sure. Sure. Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm very supportive of this and I'm also really supportive of, you know, adding a clinician. You know, again, I just think like these are, these are components that I was imagining would be part of the program that Dominic, you know, has been talking about. And I just, I think we need to look carefully at what we have in place and figure out how we can continue to bolster the, the services that we have in motion right now and maybe how we can really best coordinate, figure out where the gaps are. I think that Dominic had said that there was going to be a gap analysis that he was going to submit to us to help inform our thinking about what we, what we do next. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And I really appreciate the work that you're doing. And I just want to say, I also really appreciate, and I know constituents do as well, the work that you're, that you're doing right now, the focus that you're giving to the Commons. It's, it's made a huge difference so fast. It's, it's shocking to me how fast it seems. So thank you so much and keep at that.
Thank you. So a couple of things, we're going to get to repeat comments now. So at this point, I will open up the entire budget. If you do have a question about the, the department's budget that is not just OTR specific, you may, you may get yourself on the list. I will also, just because I've met everybody at this table before, absolutely, it is likely that the intersection of what Dominic will be presenting next week will touch on what's happening in the Police Department budget. I would just remind everybody that that is not part of the Police Department budget. So we should keep our comments and vigorous debate well scoped to the department before us. Of course, again, these items will come up, but I will prevent us from going on a tangent. Aldo Person Letterman, you are recognized for no more than three minutes. And then Aldo Person San Perez, you're next on the list.
So I guess this is sort of a two-part question. One is, I guess, Chief, you mentioned you had the new list and that there were about seventy people on that or so. What's the earliest, I'm just trying to think about if we were to fund some more of these positions that you imagine that those folks, I guess, would have to be start being paid, but we'd have to start funding those positions by. Would that be January first thing or would that be something later in the year?
Or a list potentially will, it will come out in November, potentially March.
Okay. So it might only be three quarters next year or something that.
It depends on the, on what class is so Broom County is an academy we use typically starts in March. Syracuse, which I I really do like that academy, very similar to a lot of the training and stuff that we do. They've been running multiple academies a year. But some, sometime in in the spring, when, because once we get that list back, we're processing, we're doing backgrounds, we're doing physicals, psychologicals, polygraphs, medicals. So it takes, it takes a little bit.
Yeah, it was, I remember just my stake part of the city manager, just how intensive that sort of screening was. But I used the city manager, what would it look like if we were to? Or yeah, I mean, and I knew Chief mentioned maybe they could be unfunded for part of the year. But what would that look like in terms of how that would be set up for an OTR of funding some of these positions? Not until we sort of know that they're necessarily going to be filled.
City manager is welcome to disagree with me, but I will just say preemptively that I think those types of granular staffing staggering questions should probably be overall reserved until she has had the conversation she's already alluded to with HR about finalizing vacancy information. However, if you disagree with me, you're welcome to answer.
No, I was just going to say, what I said earlier is I'm going to need to talk to HR about how, what that would look like. And I have added that to my list to talk to HR about with the vacancy stuff. So I'll find out.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. San Perez.
All right. First, on the OTRs, the outreach worker, I I'm sorry, I've become more confused since the, so. We are acting as a conduit for grant money. Is, is, is that what I'm hearing?
For the, the Violence Interrupter that is partially funded by the Give Grant. So we, so essentially, we have money that goes to hotspot policing, money that goes to probation, parole, the Sheriff's Department. The DA does not take money, but they could put in for that in future grants. So all these different components, that's something that we ask for a specific amount of seed money to start. Next year, we could ask for more money for that particular program. But for right now, we're looking to fund that through the rest of the year.
Understood. I wanted to thank you for asking for the lieutenant and the four positions. When you get them eventually, I really appreciate you asking for what you see the department is needing. And now to not OTRs, overtime. Obviously, we don't have the real overtime for this past year or the year before yet. The real twenty twenty-three overtime was well over a million. I mean, is there anything that would reduce that? I understand emergency responders incur overtime. This just happens. However, I I believe that the amount of overtime we are putting your department through is something that is avoidable. As I understand it, it's not best practice to keep emergency response on constant overtime all the time. And this is something I'm concerned about. What can we do? What should we do?
I could say that our, our overtime is less than what we try to fill. We don't have the staffing to meet all, all of the needs and demands, you know? And so we have to be selective on, on what we do fill. As, I think I spoke to this last year, some of the programs that are out there, we did just get some grant money. I don't know how much yet, but we got accepted for the Governor's Traffic Safety Council. That is, that is overtime money for traffic enforcement. But you have to have your minimum staffing before you can fill that position and take advantage of that, of that type of a grant. They give grant funds a lot of the other work that that we're doing around with the, the other. You got nervous for a second, like, I've had time. So that, that funds a lot of that other work. A lot of, our overtime right now is really due to lack of those positions. It's, we've been chasing this for, since I've been here and filling positions and losing positions and filling some more positions. And we're getting to a point where we're, the officers, we, we don't, not as quite as old as a department. And that's good and bad. We have a lot of younger officers. They're going to be there for a while, but it also takes time to get that experience to really learn how to do the job. And we try not to grow too fast because between a field training program, there's great training opportunities that take place, but it doesn't replace the years of experience and and doing a job and building relationships in the community. So yeah, short answer is, right now is, is staffing and continuing to meet all of the requests and continuing to do the community outreach. It takes, it takes time. I anticipate as this next year, we were going to have another larger year in overtime. But as we fill those positions, we're going to get to a point where we're going to see the, the benefits of, of those positions.
I will, I will note that there are five members on the list, so quick.
Yes, if you can provide a number at which you think overtime will at least be within most likely the amount that is allotted, I would love to hear it, but I'm not expecting that right now.
Well, typically, and I I'll work on getting a number for you, something more substantive, substantive.
Substantive?
Thank you. One of the things we talked about and what's happened in the past is that overtime has been. One of the things we talked about and what's happened in the past is that overtime has been supplemented with the vacant position, and that's been the balance. And this year, what we talked about is moving an unfilled position and budgeting for the overtime, but it doesn't fix, doesn't fix the staffing, it just moves the problem. So knowing, knowing this, that, you know, we're gonna, until we fill these vacancies, we're gonna continue to, to pay for the service. I mean, I, I will say that the officers, I'm very humbled to work for such a, you know, professional police department. They, I, I stretch them out, you know, especially with somebody's events, I'm like, this is a good one to go to. I, I'm like, no, listen, you're on a sergeant's list, you really want to go to this event. Yeah, and they go and they have a good time and they meet people and they, and they see, you see a different side and that's, that's where you build trust, not, not in the crisis, but when you're able to meet somebody and humanize the, you know, who you're working with and you're not seen as just a police officer and the community is not just seen as, you know, another problem that we have to figure out how to solve. You, you build those relationships, then when there is a crisis, people know each other.
Next on my list, uh all the person Kumar, you've not spoken, so you're recognized in five minutes.
Um, actually, I have two brief questions. They're both about OTR. Am I okay to ask them both now, or should I ask?
That would be preferred, yeah.
Okay, for me too, so um. So um, thank you so much for um the thorough presentation tonight. Um, and again, just to echo what David said, thank you for your compassion that you, you continuously bring. Um, it's, it's very heartening um and, and uh, you know, it gives me a lot of confidence in, in our leadership. Um, so my first question is very small. Uh, you were talking about uh the importance of um, you know, how, how great the individuals specifically who have been hired for the violence interrupter and care team clinician positions, how rooted they are in the community. Um, do you anticipate it to be um, do you anticipate being able to find somebody uh with that same level of like value and experience um easily um going forward? Because I just know that there have been some hiring challenges across the board in the city, and this seems like a pretty uh unique position, although it also seems like it's been uniquely effective, so I, I do, um, I would look to uh increasing the, their capacity.
With the care team, we, we know that whole health has clinicians that, that are very interested in doing this work. With, with a street outreach worker or uh a violence interrupter, that, that will be more of a challenge, but I also know in past conversations that I think that there's people that, that are in mind, so I'll, I'll be definitely looking for input from the, the current violence interrupter and, and from the community and recommendations. It's important for somebody that has trust in the community to be able to do this work.
Yeah, but your sense is that it, it might not be um like a, an immense challenge to find somebody who can meet the task.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's very doable. I, I don't, it could be.
Doesn't put you on the spot, but just from your, just from your general feeling, I won't hold you too, too hard, but.
Waiting for, for the city manager's crystal ball to arrive, so to answer that.
Well, uh, my. Well, my other question um is about the internal wellness clinician. Um, so again, I, I really appreciate um you, uh, you know, emphasizing the emotional impact uh that this issue can have. Um, and I guess I just wanted to say that I would be interested in hearing more information about uh the effectiveness of a position like this, uh maybe if other municipalities have it, if it's been able to um, you know, if there are available testimonials from officers or even um, you know, just like uh a general, um, you know, other areas implementing this to success, um, you know, and I understand how this can even help to deescalate um, you know, instances in the community, uh interactions between um officers and, and citizens. So um I have, I've heard uh different arguments for both sides on this, and I'm just interested in, you know, your thoughts on how specifically Ithaca could be positioned to implement this, how it would benefit the IPD, um, and you know, this is something I, if you wanted to like email over or come, you know, uh provide this information another time, I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit. Um, but I'm just interested in hearing um how specifically this can, this can help, especially in terms of our goals, um which I believe that the care team clinician, the violence interrupter do fulfill well about like internal communication, consistency, and like boots on the ground, community work.
I, I would be happy to forward uh some more information on that, but just I guess off, off the cuff, what it would look like is each officer having a regular uh check-in each year uh with the clinician. And there is still a stigmatism associated with mental health and, and it's gotten better in law enforcement. You know, I can say ten years ago, it was like suck it up, this is the job you signed up for, get out there and do it. Now, you know, law enforcement is really more cognizant, not just how it affects the officer's performance, but how it affects the officer, how it affects officers' families. You know, police departments and, and police officers have a higher rate of alcoholism than the general population. They have a higher rate of divorce than the general population. They have a higher rate of suicide. So having uh, so I'm sorry, you know, just, I, I think about all the different things over years and, and sometimes it's, you know, the challenges in the job that we face and sometimes it's, you know, challenges within the community. But I, I mean, I've seen, my first day off of FDO was an officer committing suicide. And, you know, he, he was not in a good spot. He was in a lot of trouble. And his, his reaction was that he couldn't see himself not being a police officer, and he went to the police station and he took his life. And throughout my career, you know, I've known two, two other officers. One of them through alcohol, but in talking to, to different people and doing some of the work I do with procedural justice, you know, essentially, you know, they, they're like, he took his life with alcohol. He, he had that predisposition um in his, in his family history. He had lost uh a very close coworker, a friend of ours in a serious car accident in oh four, uh on duty. And just a lot of different struggles and his family was very supportive of him and when, you know, I, I had gone through an incident where, where I was shot and he had reached out and he's like, hey, why don't I uh, me and the wife are gonna take care of your, your kids and you guys can go out and have fun. And I was like, maybe not, John, but I appreciate the, the offer. And he actually, his wife told him like, it's the alcohol or your family, and he's like, I guess I'm moving out. You know, and just seeing all these different things and knowing how, how important it is to take care of uh the officers that, that take care of us. And I know in the short amount of time here, you, you know, there's been so many incidents that I know the officers have, have had to work through with, with uh infant deaths, with terrible, terrible homicide scenes with, as somebody mentioned, the construction worker that had the accident and, and had, he died in the ambulance and away to the hospital with one of the officers, and that was the first time that officer had ever been with somebody who passed. These things, they, they take a toll and I think it's important that we, we provide these services to make sure that we have the officers that are in the best possible shape out there and best possible mental health when they're doing, when they're doing a job. Because it, it does, it, it accumulates.
There may add, add here at Ethica PD, there's been three instances, officer took their lives, officer was killed here in line duty, as well as an officer who was after doing the job, was threatened, you know, um had to move his family, you know, house was burnt down, so it's all, it's all wellness. So that's what is important with all wellness here, and that's what that is important. You know, though, and that's the top of my head here with the police department.
Well, I, thank you so much. Um, I know that this is an incredibly difficult topic, um incredibly personal one, and I, I really greatly appreciate your vulnerability. Um, and definitely uh is very important information for us to consider. Um, and you know, I would appreciate also uh the, the data that you offer to provide, the further, further data, but this alone has been very eye-opening and I, I especially appreciate the vulnerability to come and talk about this public meeting. Um, thank you.
All the person Keel, you've not spoken, you're recognized.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Um, and thank you for your thoughts tonight. Um, I've got just a couple of quick questions. Uh, the first is about the wellness coordinator. The first question is, do you feel like having this service available to officers would meaningfully extend the amount of time that officers spend at the city? Or will they stop early retirements? Will people stick around for a couple more years because they have better supports? Um, in your experience, do you think that would happen, or do you think it would just um help officers be here while they're here?
I think the goal is, is to extend uh service life for the officers. I mean, we do a tremendous amount of training and investment in the officers, and there's a tremendous amount of experience. And we've lost a few officers recently to retirement that I, I would have liked to had stayed, you know, and we had conversations around that, you know, one in uh particular comes to mind. People would tell him things, they might not go on paper and sign it, but they'd be like, hey, this is who you want to look at and give that investigative lead, but, and that came not, you know, that came from years and years of experience and treating people with respect and being trustworthy. And that, you know, people would, would reach out to them with that, so I think that we're, I mean, we're also going into a contract year very soon and and one of the things I, I've mentioned to the PBA is we need to look at it at a higher step. There, there needs to be, you know, maybe something later on in a career or longevity step that does encourage somebody to stay on longer because things have changed within the pension system a, as well, so it's for, for an officer to uh improve pension, like they, they need to increase their salary, so having a later step that encourages an officer to stay longer would, would be a benefit, but yeah, more importantly than what we're talking now is yeah, creating an environment where somebody is actually having like, I guess, a, a place and support and enjoyable work environment at times we find is more important than the actual salary. You know, when we didn't extend the lateral incentive, we had, we've had more officers come on because of the things that they've seen in social media and the work that we're doing and wanted to come be a part of that than the incentive. So many officers I talked to that got that hiring incentive were like, hey, we were, we were coming. That was nice, but that wasn't why we came, so it's not. Yeah. It's not, yeah, we, we, we're looking to fund this. Uh, no, but.
Add to one of the benefit to that as well is that, that the, the wellness assistance of the officer will mean they won't think they're a bad moment out on our community. That means when they're out there serving, they're well and they're treating our community well. I think that's another added benefit.
Do, does the city of Ithaca currently um, to the best of your knowledge, and even if there's not direct services through, through um our insurance provider or anything like that, provide therapy coverage to our officers or other counseling in case of uh traumatic incidents?
So this is something we've discussed, because we also do have EAP, but there's different things within there that are required and I think what, having a, a general yearly checkup and then if somebody's comfortable in following up with the treatment and the first thing we gotta do is actually get them in the door to talk and, and to, you know, seek out that assistance if needed. You know, some, sometimes it's just, sometimes our peer support is, is, is fantastic, but that, that doesn't, that's good for a bad day to check in and see how somebody's doing, but it's not a clinician that can actually say, hey, listen, like let's, let's hash this out, let's, let's dig in a little bit and see how this has affected you.
So and I'm s- I'm sorry to dive in a little more.
No, no.
Is, is, do we, if, if an officer decides that they want to see a therapist, does the city of Ithaca pay for that either as standard practice or um I know other agencies in the city, or I don't know if in the city, but in the county at large, like if, if somebody has a traumatic incident, the agency will pay for three counseling sessions uh following that incident.
So for a specific incident, um, there's workers comp, there's two oh seven C, like there are ways to pay for that, but the, the thing with, with law enforcement, if you can tie it to a specific incident, that's, yeah, that, that's the avenue to go. What happens, and I've heard this analogy a long time ago and I continue to use it, it's a backpack analogy. What happens in law enforcement is you deal with things throughout your whole career and for different people, those things, you know, if you think of like a rock, um for some people, it's bigger than others. And you're picking those pebbles up and you're putting them in your backpack, and then one day the bag gets really, really heavy because you haven't dealt with those things. So regardless, if it, if maybe it's a big traumatic incident, you could say like, this is, this is, we're gonna send you, you need to go get checked up and it's covered by two oh seven C, but it's, if it's a long prolonged exposure, oftentimes that's the burnout, that's the cynicism, that's, that's where, you know, officers go through these, they seek out other ways to deal with that stress, whether it's alcohol. You know, whether it's infidelity, whether, you know, leads to divorce, leads to a lot of other things. So what we're saying is like having that yearly checkup to get some of that, take some of that weight off before it becomes a crisis. That's not a time where it's a two oh seven C, that's a time when the, let's be prevent, let's do some preventative maintenance. And, and put officers or give them an opportunity to be in a better place before it is a crisis for the officer.
Abs- absolutely, and I guess I'm just wondering if.
Just all the person, final, final point, I'll come back to you just because I have five minutes.
If an officer currently wants to see a therapist, and maybe, I don't know if you know of anybody who's doing this, but if an officer currently wants to see a therapist, that's not tied to a specific incident, can they currently do that on their health insurance?
On health insurance, if it's, that would be off duty, yes. If it's work related, which is gonna be the question that comes up, then it's probably not gonna be, it'd be more of a workers comp type thing. Or like I said, there's an EO, EAP program that is available through the city for, for all employees. But it, you know, it's, it's not, what, what we're saying is making it mandatory and making that, getting somebody in there to have the conversation. Then maybe there is follow-up treatment through insurance, there is follow-up treatment through EAP, but we want to take that stigmatism out of the way and, and get officers there to have the conversation. They could talk whatever, whatever they want. Everybody has to go, everybody has their time. But it's not, it, it's forced, but a- again, it's, it's up to the therapist and that officer if there's work to be done or not.
Next person on my list is all the person Hand Sharp, you're recognized for no more than five minutes.
I just want to make sure I understand that under fringe benefits, all the zeros for twenty twenty-five is, are the glitches?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay, and is the fact that the hospital and medical insurance decreased for next year a glitch, or is that? I was kind of curious about that.
That's what I described earlier, that, that used to be where retirees were also bundled in and mapped to the department, and now retirees are on a different line, separated out, and you'll see that on the, the big executive summary page.
Gold star. Uh, all the person Matos, you are recognized for three minutes.
Three?
You've spoken already?
Oh, so that'd get, okay, I'm not gonna waste my time. Um, I have one request, if you can provide us how much we are paying for our flock contracts, that'd be amazing.
Nine thousand dollars.
Sixty-nine thousand.
Nine thousand, three hundred dollars per year.
Alright, thank you. Um, second uh request is, I see that within the last three year, your guys' budget line jumped like almost a hundred thirty-four percent. So can you just give us some examples of like, I mean, co- contract line, sorry, misspoke. Can you give us some examples of like, of what is getting charged to you guys' contract line?
So contract line would be, well, big ones would be flock, uh the tasers, uh body cameras, I believe, and then also there is the uh backgrounds, the guardian uh software. Uh, there's a program from Fleedo that we use to track vehicle maintenance and upkeep to extend the life of the fleet, try to, you know, minimize so many expenses on the backend with that. Uh, I feel like I'm missing, missing one.
I think you're, I think.
Like the photo frame.
I think, Chief, if there's others.
Yeah.
We'd welcome them in an email, just so we don't have to.
Sure.
Yeah. All the person Brown, you're recognized for three minutes.
I just, I just wanted to say one thing about flock, because I, I know there's been a lot of public uh concern and different comments. Last night, you know, I did speak to the legislature on this. I've worked uh in hand, hand in hand with the sheriff's department and we're doing everything, we're committed to ensuring that our usage is protected uh from, from outside sources. We've uh taken uh outside uh the state, we've taken those agencies off. Uh, agencies that are in the two eighty-seven agreements, we're, we're taking their access down. And we're really diligent about follow-up and how it's being used, and we're seeing cases. And we're really diligent about follow-up and how it's being used, and we're seeing cases uh regularly uh where this has become beneficial. And boy, yesterday, and, and I, I can't help but bring it up, like, we, we sell our data to everybody. This, this is something that is challenged again and again. When, when we make an arrest and we have somehow tied this to flock, or somehow tied this to surveillance, or a, you know, a search warrant or anything, there are hearings, there are suppression hearings that take place. And the expectation to privacy in public, and especially in a vehicle, there's a court process that these things are tested time and time again. So I'm very empathetic to, to the concerns that I've heard, and this is the challenge as police chief in, in doing these things that minimize intrusion into people's lives and minimize intrusions into innocent people's lives. Like, eh, one of the things that was brought up yesterday, if, if there's a vehicle description, like, this white vehicle was involved in a larceny, or this, you know, white uh Honda Civic uh just left the scene of a crime, like, all white Honda Civics are now suddenly like uh suspicious. Whereas with flock, where we can now punch in the computer quick with a case number, with a reason for the search, we could start to minimize and identify a vehicle and minimize unnecessary police contact. So there's a lot of other pros that haven't been discussed, and I know, I'm not gonna keep talking, I know there's time, uh, yeah. Certainly something I'd be open to discussing further, we, cause we do hear, we do hear the community's concerns on that.
All the person Brown, three minutes, all the person Shapiro, three minutes.
Okay, now I get three minutes. I, first for, first and foremost, I wanna um send my sympathy out to, or my empathy out to the person who y'all, what you were talking about. And um, but what it did was reboot a lot of trauma for me tonight, right? I watched people in here go into a whole nother realm with themselves, right? And that's honorable, but I expect them to think the same thing about why reimagining public safety is created. Why we've been waiting five years, why they don't get wellness peak checks, they don't get wellness checks. They don't, they don't get a chance to go to Island Health Fitness. That's a whole nother conversation when we began to talk about um with, with Rekio, right? So, so what I'm saying is, I understand, and I, and that's why I try to work closely with you, because I wanna always remember those who have been harmed and hurt, right? That, that I watch, and I'm gonna be very clear, while I watch white people eyes glaze over when we talk about them, but the sympathy that I see come out for, for, you know, you, that hurts me. Cause that's not the response that I see regular for black and brown people. I might be on the wrong, I might be way off or something like that, I still got a minute and twenty-four, but that's what I feel. That's what I feel when people question why, you know, all these things that has happened for police officers since reimagining public safety has come, you know, all these nice programs we talked about? That have come along for IPD in this city? This was reimagined public safety, y'all know what that was, executive order eight oh three, two oh three. That was for the people who was being harmed, they got none of those assets.
All the person Brown, your question.
Okay, let me wrap it up.
Your question.
What I'm saying is, and I, and I said what I said, and people can go home with their feelings or however, but what I do say is, like, please, don't forget those we lost in the struggle.
All the person Shapiro, you're recognized for three minutes. Uh, no, chief, cause there was, there was no question, there was no question there, so we're gonna just move on to the all the person.
I do, I do feel you.
Appreciate it, thank you. All the person Shapiro.
I just have one question. Is there any place in your budget where I can find um equipment or technology needs related to the other cameras that we have? Like, are, are, I know there are cameras on the commons and things like that, I don't hear anyone talking about them today, but I assume there's maintenance involved in keeping that system up to date, maybe server upgrades or things like that. Is, is that a line in your budget, or is that somewhere else?
IT.
Information.
Information technology, it's not police.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief, thank you, DC Bellamy, nice to see you and at council for your first visit. At this time, I need a motion to table the budget until Tuesday, October fourteenth at six PM. That is so moved by all the person Kumar, second about all the person Keel, all those in favor of tabling the budget. Don't get up, that passes unanimously, council, you all get to stay here. Uh, thank you, uh, chief and DC Bellamy, um, and uh the public, we're gonna move into advice of council session, so there will be no um.